All right. Hello, everybody. I'm Joshua Kemmings. I'm the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development at Thurston County. Thank you all for being here this evening in person and on Zoom. It's much appreciated. A big thank you to the Washington State Department of Commerce for coming this evening to provide this short course on planning. Whoa, microphone is falling down. Sorry about that. Just wanted to say thank you again to all those that are participating and to the present, the presenters this evening. We have a long night ahead of us, but I think this is really important as we come back together in person and online, obviously, but to get our grounding, to have a shared reality and the same language for what we do here at the Planning Commission and in planning and how it affects the rest of our community. We as staff in CPAD have worked really hard to try and relay the processes and the information that's provided to us by the state and the regulations. But we also think it's really important from time to time to hear straight from those folks that are doing that job on a daily basis. So we want to make sure that we have opportunity to set the groundwork for them to provide their information, but also for some question and answers, because I know our great planning commission has had some thoughts on their roles and responsibilities. The staff has done what we can to answer them, but I think it's important to have those questions asked directly to commerce. So thank you again for all being here. It's appreciated. And without further ado, Valerie, please take it over.
Thanks so much. I am Valerie Smith. I am the Deputy Managing Director for Growth Management Services at the Department of Commerce and your moderator tonight. I'm also going to be doing one of the presentations, but I'll get to that in a little bit. Welcome to the short course. This is a course that we do regularly. It's free and open to all. It's been presented to Washington City community since 1977. So this program has been around for a while. We're going to hear about the basic set of land use laws in Washington State, along with the focus on our statewide planning framework, which is called the Growth Management Act. There's a lot of information that we're going to try and get through tonight, but we're going to give ourselves a break in the middle and we'll open up for some questions during the presentations. And then we actually set aside a lot of time for Q and A at the end. So if you want to hold on to those really specific questions about the region or things that are of a grander discussion in nature, we can leave that for the Q and A, but if there's something that is specifically clarification or you need more information from the presenter at the time, go ahead and raise your hand. And if you're on the Zoom, I believe you can use the raise hand function and we'll try and capture that as well. I'm getting a nod. Yes. Because we are short on time. We'll, we'll get going here. I'll introduce my fellow speakers first. Jacob Stillwell is a Senior Policy Analyst with the Growth Management Services Team. He works with state agencies and local governments to amend and implement the Growth Management Act and other planning laws to help build more affordable, resilient, vibrant communities. He's a seasoned land use attorney and he represented cities, special purpose districts, and developers on a wide range of issues, including housing, transportation, eminent domain. Jake has appeared before the Growth Management Hearings Board, arguing SEPA appeals and even helped secure a unanimous victory for municipal client before the Washington Supreme Court in an important public works issue. Prior to his municipal land use work, Jake served as federal law clerk and public defender. Jake has degrees from the University of Washington School of Law and Gonzaga University Law, School of Law as well, where he served as Editor in Chief of the Gonzaga Law Review. He is passionate about affordable housing and serves as Chair of the Community Advisory Board for a Regional Coalition for Housing or the Arch. Our additional speaker tonight is Dan Penrose. He's a Planning Manager with SCJ Alliance and is a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners. Dan has over 20 years of experience in state and land use planning, which includes having served as a senior planner for the city of Lakewood, both in current and long range planning roles, which you hear more about tonight. His experience includes comprehensive plan updates, designing communication outreach campaigns, economic development, impact analyses, and managing technical studies to develop and maintain community design and character. His skills include identifying priority issues associated with planning projects and working with multidisciplinary teams to identify community-based solutions that avoid and minimize impacts. In addition to moderating, like I mentioned, I'm going to be presenting on the basics of comprehensive planning for my background. I've been a planner for 14 years now, different parts of the state of Washington. I also serve as the manager of the Western team that has planners assigned to jurisdictions like Thurston County and the cities within. And then I also manage a team that works on the Puget Sound National Asteroid Program for Commerce. I'm also the Vice Chair of the Infrastructure Assistance Coordinating Council, which is IACC. Many of you may have heard of that. And I also am the President of the South Sound Section of Washington Chapter of the APA. I hold a bachelor's in urban and regional planning for Michigan State University. Go Green. Spartans out there. And I just want to say thank you so much for being with us tonight. The short course is really great opportunity to talk to each other, learn a little bit and have some fun. So I'm going to share some additional resources. Before I do that, oops, I gotta get to my at Commerce, oops. There we go. At Commerce, we strengthen communities. We touch a lot of different aspects of communities. And that includes housing, infrastructure, like I mentioned, economic development, and we work directly with local governments, businesses and civic leaders to strengthen communities so that all residents may thrive and prosper. I want to say a special thank you to our short course on local planning partners and sponsors. The Department of Commerce holds these short courses, but we can't do it without our partners, including the, including the insurance agencies from the Association of Washington Cities Risk and Management Services Agency, the Planning Association of Washington, and the Association of Planning Washington Chapter. This is kind of small for those in the room, but the links are live and we'll send this out to share as well. These are some additional resources. So this short course on local planning is actually like a 400-page booklet that we've provided for a resource. So many of the stuff that you'll hear tonight, if you're like, hey, I wish I want, I wish they would have spoken more about this specific topic. You can go ahead and use those resources that we provided to kind of dig a little further. Let us know if you have questions. We'd love to discuss more for you. We're going to have a certificate to print and sign at the end. If you're looking to get your Open Public Meetings Act certification, if you're elected or appointed official. And we'll get those to you. I really love pointing out some other resources specifically about planning, but then also just for local governments in general. The Municipal Research Services Center or MRSC is a website that I visit on almost daily basis and I use their resources all the time. You can ask questions of them. Usually it should go through one of your staff members at the county, but they have general FAQs on there and you can just search their website for different topics that you're interested in and finding out more information on. And then here's some links to our other resources as well. So any questions just about logistics or anything that wasn't clear in my introduction?
So you're going to send us those references?
Yeah. Especially if you signed in, so please sign in today. And I think for the online, since you signed in and registered, we'll have captured your email with that. And follow up. Okay. So I'm going to bring us Jake to do our first segment, which is the legal basis of planning. And I'm going to show you how to use this fancy thing. To the fancy slide, it's just the role. But it's a little sensitive. Be patient.
All right. Hello, everyone in the room and online. Well, we get the PowerPoint set up. I'll just introduce myself again. I'm Jake Stillwell. I work at the Department of Commerce as a Senior Policy Analyst for Growth Management Services. As Val mentioned, my background's a land use attorney, but I take that hat off in my position at Commerce, working primarily on policy advice and assisting with legislation and fiscal notes these days, which happens quite a bit. So I'm here to talk about the legal basis of planning in Washington State. And this is really to provide a, you know, bird's eye view of growth management various state and some federal laws and regulations that intersect and impact local planning. So let's see here. You were indicating about it being sensitive. There we go. Okay, so land use regulation to start obviously has a profound impact on our day-to-day lives. As folks in the Planning Commission and the planning realms, I know everyone here understands that. Looking specifically today, there's a lot of conversations about, for example, the history of redlining and how difficult that's been to untangle, given how entrenched land use policies can become once, once they're enacted. And so it's really important and a lot of our laws emphasize I'm doing a lot of upfront work and analysis on the impacts that land use regulations will have on communities. So what we will cover this evening, again, this is sort of a list of some of the statutes we'll go over. We're not going to go over all of them in terrible detail because that would take forever. But here's a quick snapshot. The big ones that we'll be looking at, obviously Growth Management Act, SEPA, Shorelines Management Act, and just some sort of background context on how some of these laws came to be and how they interact today.
Are those also hyperlinked? Potentially not.
No, but MRSC, which Val talked about, it has wonderful materials on every one of these statutes. So if you're looking for more sort of background information, MRSC is a wonderful resource. I like that. I use it almost daily and have it almost every one of my jobs as an attorney and as a policy advisor. Sources of planning and land use, this is sort of similar. Again, we're not going to go over all of these detail. But this is just to point out that when we're looking at the authority of what we do in the planning context, you look all the way from the state and federal constitutions to statutes, local comprehensive plans, you know, administrative regulations, that could be federal regulations, Wax, Washington Administrative Code, and then case law too, all the way from the courts through the various environmental land use boards, the Growth Management Hearings Board, shoreline, pollution control. So there's a lot of different authorities that all intersect and are all trying to essentially interpret and enforce some of the same policies. So there's a lot of authority out there and it's important to at least understand what those sources are and where you need to look if you're trying to answer any particular question. Unfortunately, rarely is there one source for an answer. So the beginning of zoning, zoning has not always been with us, believe it or not. And it was in the 1920s that the United States Supreme Court first recognized zoning as a, as a federal, essentially a federal right that municipalities have. There's a case here Euclid versus Ambler Realty. You might hear Euclid, UCLAN or something like that, forms of zoning was sort of the early zoning ideas. And it was essentially still what we know today. There was a community that wanted to impose a certain development regulations on the city to control height, bulk, density, that sort of thing, in different areas within the city. And zoning code interfered with some property the Ambler Realty was trying to develop. And they filed a lawsuit essentially arguing that the city was interfering with their property rights by limiting the scope of their to develop property. When all the way up to US Supreme Court, because at the time this was a relatively obvious idea, and the Supreme Court ruled that the local government had within its police powers, its power to regulate health and safety of the community, the ability to enact land use laws and essentially zoning. So this is sort of just to point out the fact that this is a, you know, relatively new concept, hasn't been around forever. And, and that it has, you know, its history sort of grounded in the US Supreme Court. And also to note that the usual explanation of this case is in fact that it had to do with the community trying to regulate, this was an industrial property that was going to be built. A lot of these cases also talk about cities having the right to essentially regularly types of housing that the communities didn't want, that often meant housing for communities of color and other groups. And so zoning early on was also used in various ways that courts often also recognize. So a very complicated history. But again, around the 20s, we see zoning being recognized by the courts. Washington zoning is within our constitution, actually in two places. It's grounded in that the right for a city or county or municipality to exercise its police powers. It's its powers to protect the health and safety of citizens or residents, all residents. Again, statutory basis here. So again, sort of going through these, we've got federal courts, state constitution, and here we have various state statutes that we'll get into. So I'll spend a lot of time here. This slide is to sort of describe the fact that then when we're looking at what community are you are you analyzing? I guess not just city or county, it's what type of city. In Washington, we have various types of cities, first, second class, that town code cities, most are code cities these days. But so in addition to figuring out county or city, you have to dig a little deeper. So again, everything is pretty nuanced. You have to really understand the context of your question. Moving ahead, 1930s, 60s, this is sort of the framework, Growth Management Act, Go Out and You, Planning Commission Act, in the 30s and the Planning Enabling Act. These laws basically set up really versions of comprehensive plans the formation of planning commissions and how they interact with county commissions and city councils. Most states still today comprehensive plans were made to find that could be the basis of court action, things like that, sort of basically do this in counties to get this planning work. But didn't you have the teeth that are broken? And state statutes, those are laws that often interact with planning. Here's two, two of the main ones that obviously, if you travel, it's Washington. Traveling takes a significant sort of soft often have statutory rights to participate in the respect of the federal agency. So the Clean Water Act issues. So the act basically water quality. EPA is given the Department of Ecology Authority to basically implement, regulate that. But you have to comply with certain Water Act in how cities and counties water do with respect to pollutants and what's connected to specific areas. It contains cer- certain standards for this purpose of conserving by the ecology. Like to the health, safety issues. Critical area that's recognized against is fish and water conservation areas. Those again, a lot of this. So moving to Washington State statutes. Speaking into the mic for the State Subdivision Act. So this is relevant to if you want to divide property for the purposes of constructing and selling residential property primarily, you have to follow the State Subdivision Act. And it's a different process for, for how depending on how many lots that you want to create, usually maybe four, five, five or more, and you need to like do a subdivision process under that. It's called the short subdivision process. There's exceptions, which are short. But the general process works in that you have to basically put together a site plan showing here's the lots that we would like to divide. Here's how many residential properties we build each one. You have to provide all sorts of facilities for residential use. You have to show where the streets go. You have to show how your head, surface water runoff, thirteen, leaving designated corporate space, all that, all that good stuff, all has to be shown. You have a site plan that looks something like this. And that goes before often you did sort of round one, where you will get a certain level of approval to move forward and start constructing subdues. At the end, accomplish on that approval, you go back to sign that approval. Legally subdividing lots, you can start selling them off. So the point here being that when you subdivide the property, you do have to sort of make those provisions for public health and safety is part of that. You can't just divide lots up and have them be sale. And accommodate the residences. All right. Now, SEPA, State Environmental Policy Act, everyone's favorite. So SEPA was enacted in 70s around the same time as EPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. And they're similar, but they're different in some critical ways. The, the basic framework for SEPA is that when, this is an exception. The termary process is that an applicant can do something to subdivide something like that. An application to do that will have a checklist. And checklist is essentially a series of questions about how the project will impact the environment. But checklist has information, if there's complexity of the project. Based on the checklist, some people are throwing that project on the responsible official. Their project is likely to have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And if so, then state which is a very large, complicated document that owes into it ways, project may have this environment and all the rest. If the responsible official determines the project's not going to have an adverse impact on the environment, then those relatively development was the recognition that sort of the middle often occurs, which is called where the responsible official basically says, based on your application, I think that those probably the project will have this impact on the environment. But if you're discussing your project in these days, are you hitting those impacts below the significant and forward statement? That's often these days, and often those condition conditions are often in conflict with the compliance and system regulations. As the Growth Management has amended there's been a lot of hopefully what's required from environmental protection this year and what um, really is to protect the environment too. So I, that's, it's often high risk for a, a specific project. The process is a little different for trying to legislative, legislative action, which is also relevant to this group. You also, even though it's not a specific project, something's necessarily being constructed. Talking comprehensive plan taking some sort of legislative action that's not specific to a project, you still have to do it through the process. Still have to fit together a checklist to demonstrate actions going impact on the environment. Sometimes when it's actually might comprehensive to do pretend something I just want to save some time. And it's a bit different because legislative action often doesn't anything that happened. They need to adopt the update that the automaticity is necessary for the project. And it's just generally looking at the types of projects and how we found the that weren't previous, previous topics. And you have to see and if so. Next statement. So it's there's a distinction, a lot of teams. There's well, it's just what's their action. Selecting using world. And and uh it's that's these mind.
Question. I mean, you're talking, I appreciate you telling us this is like how this is supposed to work, but I want to talk about like how this actually happens on the ground. Because I was just reading an email a couple of days ago about the fact that in 2005, the city of Olympia lost a court of appeals case about using determinations of non-significance as a threshold, basically, you know, and in the 18 years since then, they've never issued a determination of significance for anything in the city. So it seems to, and I've seen several cases where people appealed or they want to appeal, but they are found not to have standing and all this stuff. So like, I want to talk about how this actually works because it seems to be that in, in what I read, it never really slows down any development. They always say there's no harm to the environment. And yet we all know that that's not always the case.
Yeah. Well, so I mean, so first of all, you're right in that the way it's there's always a big difference between the way it's, you know, sort of set up to work and how it plays out in real life. A couple of things, I can't speak to too many specific examples to, to Olympia. But I'll say that I think one thing that has led to fewer determinations of significance is like I was saying, the, the enactment of development regulations that are more in line with conservation, environmental protection, and these sorts of things has, has led to less of a need for determinations of significance. Because if you can demonstrate that the, that your project is consistent with development regulations that are the that are themselves um have been determined to not have adverse impacts on the environment, then that necessarily leads to, uh well, I shouldn't say that, but that consistency usually means you don't have to do an environmental impact statement, because your project is consistent with regulations that are intended to already mitigate impacts to the environment. And so, you know, since two thousand and five, you know, the last decade or two, jurisdictions have been, um I think mindful that as they sort of integrate environmental protection into their development regulations, that leads to less projects having to go through the EIS process. Uh so I think that's been a big part of it. Yes.
Follow on question.
Sure.
My question was about uh does that, you know, for the non-project actions? Are are cumulative uh impacts supposed to be considered? Or is it on a case by case, like, are you, like, when it's written and when it's considered? Does it only have to be considered in terms of a case by case basis? Or, you know, if you're looking at a policy change or something like that, do you have to think about the cumulative impacts?
You do have to think about the cumulative impacts, yeah. So on a non, you said on like a legislative action? Yeah.
Project.
Yeah, so so you would look at, so for example, if this is a um an area-wide rezone, you would have to look at, okay, in the whole area that we're rezoning, uh what types of projects on the whole are we now allowing that weren't allowed before? Um and yeah, the growth board has said, you do have to look at the difference there. Um not on a case by case basis, but cumulatively, what have you done? And does that justify doing an EIS? Because now you are projects that are now allowed that weren't before. If if there's a probable, uh if it is probable, they'd have a significant adverse impact on the environment, then you would have to do an EIS for that. Yeah. Okay. So I'll I'll move on, these are great questions. Uh I will move on for the sake of time, and there's going to be more opportunities for Q and A at the end, as as Val mentioned. Uh Shorelines Management Act, um so this was also a adopted in the seventies by Citizens Initiative. And it's essentially um specific types of develop development regulations around shorelines of the state. And so there's uh more protection uh for those areas than um than would otherwise be in your in your jurisdiction. For example, uh that requires no net loss of shoreline, so sorry, keep pressing the clicker. Um so uh development projects within the shoreline jurisdiction have to demonstrate that there'll be no net loss um of the shoreline. So if you are going to do some dredging or or something like that, uh you would have to make sure that that is mitigated so that there's no net loss of of the ecology there. Yeah, in addition, jurisdictions have to put together what's called a shoreline master program, which is essentially a almost a mini cop plan um specific to the shoreline jurisdiction. So uh development regulations permitting uh specific to the shorelines, um a common shoreline permit uh that has to be submitted for projects within the shoreline jurisdiction is a uh shoreline substantial development permit. Um and these types of approvals, both the approval of the shoreline master program and approval of of certain shoreline permits, like a conditional use permit within the shoreline jurisdiction, those actually have to go up to the Department of Ecology. So the state has recognized that um uh shorelines of the state have, you know, statewide significance. And so uh whereas, you know, your comprehensive plan, sort of unless it's appealed, uh the last stop is is your your county commission or your city council. Uh the Department of Ecology is actually the last stop for many of the shoreline decisions, both the the shoreline master program and certain permits.
We're working on one right now.
Well, there you go. Oh, and at the last, the other thing I'll say here is, too, an important feature is water-dependent uses um have to are sort of prioritized in your shoreline master programs as well. So there's both development regulations um on the use of land, but also development regulations on the development of land, but also on land uses within that area. So it needs to prioritize uh water-dependent uses, such as marina, public access and recreation, that sort of thing. Growth Management Act, I believe this is, we're going to go into a lot of this detail throughout this evening, so I won't spend too much time on it now. Uh just the real basics, um Growth Management Act uh has certain priorities that lead to uh what has to go in your comprehensive plan. So comprehensive plans are adopted by planning cities and counties every ten years. They have certain required elements, for example, land use, transportation, capital facilities. They basically require restrictions to uh along capital facilities and um budget for how they think they're going to be able to pay for future capital facilities with population forecasts, uh with uh land patterns. Basically making sure you're growing at responsible managed uh pace. Comprehensive plan uh also has voluntary developments, some of those get added periodically. Um but it essentially is a document for how you growing uh decade by decade. Springtime, and then city council and development regulations then have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. So if we're looking at sort of the scale, it's comprehensive plans um sort of set the the ideal of the general framework. And the development regulations have to be consistent with those goals and policies. Uh height, building scale, uh things uh population, what council provided by the office. And so, you know, just take that into account again, every census from the I think I'll stop there because Project Review Act. So this was an attempt by the legislature uh in the nineties uh to help streamline processes. SEPA land use approvals you sometimes reason um issues raised with comprehensive planning, you start getting very complicated. Project Review Act I give you final decision of days. Application that completes um itself has become submitted. Further streamways. So this is a uh a different So LUPA action on a project payment. So what's important here, uh LUPA applies just to project actions. So you can't use LUPA to challenge a comprehensive plan or legislative action, but the building specifically is something, some sort of Yeah, taking taking can't take private property is that um physical which is um sort of specifically is necessary. Way it's it's property to more economic value. And what's why is because the primary headed that situation is the simply has something that piece of property and deprives the specifically to avoid that actions and allocations. So these actions and allocations are a form of takings. So that's where there's a conditional request on a permit approvals. And there's a a condition to improve the right of way, expand the street and it looks like it's traffic it's unable to handle physical improvements to the property or something called long which are two separate cases that had the it establishes the world and it's going little bit. Um it's need to file that um to improve uh it's sort of is to be related to the traffic that's been generated. By by open space requiring personality means that the the condition has to be pushing to the impact. So again, if it's just a little you're going to generate over it's not required you put in two more so this mixes benefits. Basically says once a complete application, your project is vested to the regulations comprising the This is the process where components can basically put a hold, accepting certain type of development stations or project applications, uh because months at a time, it can be extended for six more months. You can sell your store working in and I can't use this to be a screw in that process, it's really, you know, we to keep up with the this type of project management, we can figure out what to do. That lets So
Okay, while we're shifting, we're going to shift the room a little bit. And the folks you hear this better? Please provide your comments in the chat or continue to text us if this is better, can you hear me? And Valerie, you're going to test.
Okay.
If you keep your chin up.
Now, I'm too far. There we go.
What happens? Just kidding.
If I talk and project my voice outward, does that work better? Yes. Yay. Okay, that might be what we're going to do now. So sorry, if you do, people in the room want to switch their seats at all? Okay. Make sure everyone's comfortable.
I'm definitely going to move.
Get some spit wads out, just kidding. COVID, no, no spitting. Uh Chris, do you have the PowerPoint? Yes, thank you. So I'm going to make up time, I talk really fast, I'm from Michigan, so um uh I can make up some of the time, because I think that the other presentations are equally as important, if not more, than the comp plan basis. Because um reading the room, I'm I'm pretty sure all of you have worked or are in knowledge of what comprehensive planning is um in general, or have seen what a comprehensive plan locally is. Um anyone willing to raise their hand if they've not seen a comprehensive plan before? All right, um so we'll get to there. So um we're going to be covering why why we plan, and then under the Growth Management Act, what does that mean for Washington state jurisdictions? Planning is really important, um especially, you know, you go to the grocery store, you make a list, you're planning for your your meals that week. You are planning for retirement regularly. Comprehensive planning is very similar to that concept. You're looking at the long range effects of your decisions today and tomorrow, and you want to uh make sure that those decisions that you're making aligns with your vision. And so I'm actually going to now turn and point to the wall back here behind me, because uh the county room here and the boardroom actually spells out your county vision, which is Thurston County is a vibrant community, ensuring the health, safety, and well-being of generations to live, work, and play. And so I really think that's something that we want to capture and show, the vision of Thurston County is a long-term vision. It's going to be generational impacts, and we really want to make sure that our decisions that we're making are going to um further that vision and not be going against it. Planning also helps us manage public expectations. The public wants and expects fairness and transparency in the decisions that we're making. And um as well as um the comprehensive planning process in Washington state places a heavy emphasis on deliberation and community engagement. And once that plan is in place, the development regulations and the implemented implementing actions need to align with that goal and be also provide certainty and be transparent, so that everyone who's applying for a permit or coming to talk about their property have certainty of what the rules are going to be once they start. Provide certainty and be transparent so that everyone who's applying for a permit or coming to talk about their property have certainty of what the rules are gonna be once they start that process. Planning helps us accommodate population growth. We are growing really, really fast, especially in the western side of the state. Uh the state of Washington is expecting nine more million people by uh twenty forty. And uh we want to maintain that quality of life for the generations. Um for now and into the future. And accommodate new growth as well. So why is there a Growth Management Act? Versus just a regular Planning Enabling Act in a different state? Uh for the Washington State, uh the GMA was adopted, as Jake mentioned, in nineteen ninety as a state planning framework. We wanted to look at uh uncoordinated and unplanned growth. And address those issues uh that would result in maybe urban sprawl. Um the need to wait in long traffic and uh threats to our natural environment, which we all really um value here in Washington. And um the environment that helps us uh with our industries that are here, uh economic development and so forth. And that plan is required to be a twenty year horizon. Uh who plans under the Growth Management Act? Uh it varies from county to county. Um as shown in this map, the dark blue are the fully planning counties in the central Puget Sound region who also have a. A myriad of other requirements that they have to um abide by. For Thurston County, you're in a little bit lighter blue, but there's still a significant amount of planning that has to be done. Uh per the the Growth Management Act requirements, including the buildable lands or what's called the Review and Evaluation Program. And as you can see there, um as we go across the state, it does get a little bit less. Um but there's still uh tons of planning work that has to be done, even if you're not a fully planning county, which is shown in the orange there. Oops, too fast. There's fourteen goals of the Growth Management Act. These are not listed in any specific priority, um and they're not meant to be uh set up in any priority. Um some of the goals you're gonna see are saying encourage compact urban development or urban growth. Um. But then the other ones are a little bit more stronger. They say protect the environment. And then in the twenty twenty one legislature, they actually updated the goal there in the blue. And it says a plan for and accommodate housing affordable. Affordable to all economic segments. So before that said more of an encourage. And now it's actually saying that you must plan for and accommodate housing affordable to all economic segments. And these goals should be complementary to another one another. Uh but sometimes we do have to, as planning commissioners or county officials, have to weigh those um against each other as um you know, we're making decisions regularly. To help us make those decisions, we have. Um oh, I skipped a slide. Myself. Um. So in general, the a resource, the land speaks first, natural resource lands, critical areas. Uh counties must designate and conserve natural resource lands, which include agriculture, forest and mineral resources. And that's in the RCW. Um and then also all jurisdictions, when they're setting up their original plans. Uh they must designate and protect environmentally critical areas. And they have to use best available science to inform that. Um. Designation and uh the regulations that are put in place to protect those functions and values. So um. When you're setting up your comprehensive plan, one of the ways that we actually uh help inform that is with a countywide planning process. And that includes uh the county, the cities within, and then sometimes regional association. So in Thurston, you have the Thurston uh Regional Planning Council, the TRPC, which is uh mostly a transportation base. But they also uh do a lot of land use work um as well now. Um and then you have what's called Sustainable Thurston is the the plan. Um that's set up by this region wide planning process. So there's a framework there. Uh your countywide planning policies can also uh determine how you're going to split up growth. Um allocations, how you're gonna plan for these bigger countywide facilities like highways or airports. I know a lot of us are been talking about airports lately in the region. Um. You're also looking in the countywide uh planning policies that considering affordable housing. Uh countywide economic development. And then, uh like I mentioned, um I put Puget Sound up there, but uh Thurston has the Sustainable Thurston Plan. Um that's been adopted. As part of that uh regional plan. Counties are the uh responsible party for designating urban growth areas. And urban growth areas are uh. Where um we expect to see uh more dense development happen over time. Um and uh. Um. Calculating that growth that is uh based on the twenty year population projection that is set up in your countywide planning policies. So we have um considerations to make when we're we're designated urban growth areas. We're looking at the capacity, uh urban services, are we able to provide services to all the areas within our urban growth boundary? Um especially within the next six years, is there funding available? Um is there upgrades need to happen? And then is the zoning that's in place able to accommodate that growth as well? So we're looking at land capacity analysis and um really looking at how can we densify more within the urban areas that exist? And then protect those areas outside of that um that are mostly rural or agriculture in nature. As I mentioned, there is a countywide planning process process to allocate population. Um it starts at the OFM level, which is the Office of Financial Management. They come out with projections and then the counties and the cities work together to come up with. Um. How each um area is going to um accommodate and plan to grow in the next twenty years. Um we also are looking at the rural areas and um how can we make plans and policies in place to. Maintain that rural character, which is more of a low density development. Uh you have more of a rural service levels. Um you're protecting those agriculture forestry lands. Um and then as we're allocating population and we're looking at our existing plans. We have the the buildable lands counties, which Thurston is. Um. Looking at how the growth patterns have happened over time and whether or not we're consistent with what we thought was gonna happen. Um but taking some reasonable measures before expanding the UGA is um really important. As I mentioned, the buildable lands, looking backwards. Um and then also uh looking at the land capacity forwards. So there are required elements or required chapters of a comprehensive plan under the Growth Management Act. These five elements are required. Uh as I mentioned, the housing element was um strengthened in the twenty twenty one legislature. And we're looking at uh residential inventories and projected housing needs by type. And by income band. So the Department of Commerce has been tasked with coming out with, similar to OFM's population projections, we're going to be coming out with. Um. Housing needs and allocations for each county. And then the county process is gonna work with the cities to allocate how much of that housing need is going to be then allocated to the as the city's responsibilities. Um and so we're gonna be looking at, like I said, housing types and um identifying those um different types at each income band. Which is um a new policy that. Um just came about, so that'll be different from what you probably remember doing the last time you updated. We're also required to have a transportation element in our comprehensive plan, which also includes setting um concurrency and levels of service requirements. Our capital facilities plan is supposed to inventory and assess the current and future needs. So if you're gonna have to have a huge capital project to replace something in the near future, you're gonna wanna plan for that. You're gonna wanna have um an idea of what. What's the life cycle of some of your facilities and when those are gonna need to be updated and how you're gonna pay for that. And then how you're gonna accommodate the new growth, not just your existing growth. Um so looking at capacity building as well. And um looking at how you're gonna serve the whole land use plan, not just one portion of the 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 area or another. Um for us counties, we are also looking at the rural element, which is um. Like, as I mentioned, we're gonna define and protect that rural character, so lower density development. Um agriculture. Um and other uh natural resources protections. The changes that we saw in twenty twenty one were with House Bill twelve twenty. And so I mentioned this um in more detail earlier, but uh this kind of uh the slide. Details what actually is gonna be happening um as it relates to that new law. Um and that'll be for your staff and us and everyone to work together towards. Um we're here to help, so if you have questions for Commerce, just let us know. Um this is new guidance that we're putting out, so we're always looking to improve um if there's something that's not clear. Uh as part of twelve twenty, we're also looking at desperate impacts displacement and exclusionary exclusion in housing. Um and so some of the historic zoning regulations that uh have a distributory effect. Uh really trying to address those going forward. And not redo um past mistakes. When you have a comprehensive plan, uh it needs to be externally consistent, which is your countywide planning policies. Um some of your adjacent jurisdictions, you might be sharing some regional goals or um. Policies and then your plan should be internally consistent. So your comprehensive plan um is using the same set of assumptions for population projections. Um your elements are gonna tell the full story of what's happening and uh they aren't going to contradict each other. So there is an adoption process. Once you have a comprehensive plan drafted. Um we really like to see, and it's required by the RCW, um early and often public participation. Uh so many of you may have actually adopted a public participation plan to ensure how you're going to actually um get. The information out to the public and then to hear feedback from them and receive that. And uh Dan will talk more about that in the rules uh segment. Uh there is a SEPA Environmental Review that happens. There's a sixty day notice requirement. Uh that you send that. Draft document to Commerce and the other state agencies uh before you actually do a public hearing to adopt that document. Um and then if you have a regional um transportation organization like TRPC, they may have a certification requirement where they actually certify your transportation plan. Um to ensure consistency with the regional plan. Um. Plans can be amended once per year. But not more than once per year because you wanna look at the cumulative effects of your changes. If we're constantly changing something, that's a long range plan in nature. Um we need to make sure that we're um actually letting it it it's do its job as a long range plan. So doing it more than once a year is not allowed. Um and then you must update every ten years to ensure that your uh comprehensive plan and development regulations are consistent with new laws. Uh sometimes case law that's happened will dictate how we um update our comprehensive plans um at the next cycle of updates. And so uh the. Thurston County Plan is due to be updated by June thirtieth of twenty twenty five. As I'm sure a lot of you know, some team see nods in the room. Uh so um and then there's also um an appeal process uh through the Growth Management Hearings Board. Um. That can happen as well. So once you got your plan adopted. We're looking at implementation. We want to implement our plan so that we can guarantee that that vision that's up on our wall is gonna be seen. Um through all the generations coming forward. So we're gonna have a. Different development regulations, which is like your subdivision code. Um some of your uh infrastructure spending priorities are part of the implementation strategy. Uh. And then at the permit counter, which is that blue box, every time someone comes into the. Um agency or the local government, when they're pulling a permit, it's gonna be consistent with those. Um and as Jake was mentioning, uh some of the environmental protection stuff relies on the consistency of your your rules and regulations to and uh really implement that. Uh planning framework. So I mentioned level of service earlier. Uh this is required for transportation planning. Um and so if uh the level of service is set for a road per se, and then that level of service actually drops down, then you have an obligation to uh take action, to do something. Um to improve it um and what those um actions are depends upon what the issue is really. Um but there's a requirement to reassess and look at your um if you're setting your goals appropriately. Um. And then also, can you actually afford to up keep your uh facilities up updated and um concurrent with the development that's happening over time? So here's some more examples of development regulations that implement. Um our plans, we have our zoning code. Uh subdivision, public works standards, like your roads with. Um setbacks. Uh some places have design standards or landscaping requirements. I think a few people or a few uh jurisdictions around here have tree retention requirements. And those are part of that um. Other regulations that might implement. As we mentioned, every ten years, you have to actually open up your comprehensive plan and review it against. Uh we we actually provide a checklist every time uh for counties and cities and and we provide updated. Updates to the law uh documents and also case law. Um so the consequences of if you don't do this, if you're not updating, you could actually uh. Not be able to access some of the grants and loans. Um and so your public works department is usually pretty. Pretty well versed in, hey, is this updated because we wanna get some money? Um so the Public Works Trust Fund. Uh Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, Clean Water Fund. Uh RCO Grants and um some mitigation grants as well require that you have an updated plan to actually access that funding. So some final thoughts to leave with um as you're looking at your comprehensive plan and starting to to make that update uh process happen. Uh we do wanna see that urban areas are absorbing more so that most of the development. Um. We have some really great uh planning policies out there that are used by Thurston already in the Sustainable Thurston. Um and then the cities within. Um so we're really uh love seeing that. There's also some other stuff that's um coming up that's of um. Um. Importance to like the governor per se, like the climate action stuff that uh Thurston's leading in. Um a lot of the ways that we're seeing. Um and so we really like to see um what's happening here and then um. Making sure that we're protecting the environment as well as maintaining that rural character. So lower density development in the county. And um compact urban development in the cities. Okay, I have forty seven seconds left. Feel like that's a win. Um. Are there any questions? On what I just presented specifically? If someone in the chat.
We. Slide nineteen real quick. Like a. Just to review that.
You do that. You hit that.
Yes, thanks. Nineteen, please?
We just had a great meeting with the Board of County Commissioners the other day, and one of the questions that one of the commissioners asked was. Do the CWPPs, which comes first, the comp plan or the countywide planning policies? And our response was the countywide planning policies. We worked with our local jurisdictions and everyone feels like they're up to date, that they're not. There's not a big gap between where our comp plan is and where the CWPPs are, so. They're fine at this point. No need to address the CWPP. They're fine at this point, no need to address the CWPPs. But what I like here on this. Is you've got the community vision, which is up there on our board on the wall. Kind of aligned side by side with the GMA goals and the CWPPs. It really demonstrates. Our community's commitment to building our own community. And that's why I wanted to stop on this slide a second and have any input from the planning commissioner others. On their thoughts on the way that you have this slide organized. And I see a hand is raised.
Yeah, and it goes to a question that I was going to ask, which is um. What is the role for the planning commission in um the public participation plan? Because we were presented the public participation plan, but we haven't really had any input into it. And I'm really curious to know um whether as a planning commission, we are um expected or invited. Um, or have a role in what that um public participation planning is.
Yeah, definitely. And uh I'm not going to steal Dan's thunder because he has a whole segment on the rules and responsibilities of planning. Um, but I will say that uh the public participation is part of the statute that you're required to do. Um, early and continuous public participation. How each jurisdiction um does that is really up to them. And so that's why we encourage adopting an actual public participation plan that spells out kind of what you want to do. Um, but there's so many innovative um ideas happening, other jurisdictions. Um, I know when I was working for the city of Viacomo, we set up a booth at the farmer's market and just talked to people about stuff. Um, and our planning commissioners were the ones that manned that booth. Um, and so there's different ways to do it. Um, and there's not like a set statute on like how to do it. It's just that you should be um doing your best to be um open, continuous and. Um, provide that that opportunity for not just getting information to people, but receiving feedback on that information as well.
Well, I'm going to interpret that to mean that there is a s- a strong potential role for the planning commission because. We bring, um, you know, we are partly here as community liaisons or representatives. And then some of us have some degree of expertise in public involvement planning. And um, and as in our role as kind of re- uh research arm. Um. That that's something that we can bring, that that we can involve ourselves in is is the public participation.
Yeah, definitely. I think one of the the good things about having a public participation plan. Is that it sets the timeline too. So these statutory requirements to update your plan, like I mentioned, the deadline of. Um, June thirtieth of twenty twenty five, um, those are in the statute. And so um when we're doing our work plans, when we're creating um the opportunities there, we do have to meet that timeline, that deadline. And so um having that structure is really important. Um, so everyone's clear on when is the time to engage and then when is the time to actually start making decisions on. Um, how this is all going to um go forward uh to ensuring that we're meeting those deadlines.
So what was the de- the deadline was June thirtieth of twenty?
Twenty five. For Thurston County? Yep, um, and um Commerce does have uh grant funding available. And we'll be working with your uh planners um to get that to you. Um, which will include a scope of work uh for the contract as well. Um, and as I mentioned before, we have a checklist for jurisdictions to use. Um, planning commissioners can look at that checklist as well um and kind of see what the statute says needs to be updated. Um, so you kind of have an idea of what your requirements are. Um, and then just helps orient around, um, because a part of the checklist is inventorying your current plan. Inventorying your current plan to show where things are located like right now, just so you have a better idea of where you're starting from.
Yeah, well, we've we've expressed an interest in seeing that.
Great. Um, so we are uh going to take a ten minute break right now, so it is. Five, so we'll be back here um seven fifty five uh with um Dan's presentation. Thanks. The virtual. Thank you so much. Uh, welcome back uh to the short course on local planning. And we're going to jump into um the roles in planning and effective public processes um presented by Dan Penrose. Dan?
Thanks. Well, good evening, everyone and everyone online. It's um fun to be here. Here in the room, who is a planning commissioner? Raise your hand if you would. All right, and what's your, what's your role?
This new staffer.
Awesome, all right. Um. Boy, in those introductions, they said something about like planning for more than twenty years. I I looked around and I don't know who they're talking about. Uh, I certainly don't feel that old, but um I have helped out with uh with planning commissions for a long time. It's it's actually one of my favorite things. Having a good planning commission, one that kind of um had uh communicates well. Collaborates with each other, listens, um, asks good questions of staff. Uh, it really is, at least from a staff perspective, pretty d- pretty fun and delightful. Um. Conversely, it can be very difficult if the planning commission um is uh is either not engaged. Or therefore ulterior motives or has other agenda items. It can be very, very tough. So your role that you that you have, and we'll talk a little bit about this evening, i- is critically important. And it's one that uh is required in GMA and it's one that uh. Elected officials and policymakers, they have to have um something in between the public and them. Because there's just too many issues, especially on this land use stuff. So um, we'll we'll get into this uh as we go. Um. They tell me this is the planning process. I'm not sure where where you guys are at. Uh, but but it is, it is kind of an elaborate mechanism that each has an important part. And there there's a, there's a end product at the at when we're all said and done. Um, and ideally, that's uh, that's a recommendation from the planning commission and going to the elected uh body. Which in this case, in this room is is the county commission and um and then they make the decision. And so that's kind of, that's kind of where your process uh stops um in in most cases. So um it is kind of messy, but it's it uh it is outlined in a number of different ways. And you know, staff is prepared to help you walk through that that process. Um, it's important that people have a say in planning decisions. And so as a result, there's a range of participants from the elected officials who, you know, they run for office, they're overtly political creatures. Right to uh planning commissioners that are appointed, which are uh, you know, your volunteers. I I know cookie and coffee is is great, but that's about it as far as our our compensation. Um, staff whose, you know, job it is to keep you informed and bring uh items in front of you um for your consideration. Um, a hearings examiner will talk a little bit about what that individual does. Um, there are other agencies that have a a role in the planning process. And uh obviously, the general public and 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 people who participate in the development process are are critically important. So in short, um, all of these roles are interrelated. You have your city council, your county council, those are the elected policymakers. You as the uh appointed policy advisors, um and then the professional staff that um that. Are the technical leads for most of these things. You 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 all need to have that shared mission and and you know, throughout it all. And within within that process is is the public. Um, and the man, that public is a, it's it's challenging. I just. I'm wrapping up a process in Lewis County and the public is one of the critical issues. It does the public mean the neighborhood? Does the public mean the community? Does the public mean the entire county? Does the public mean the state or does it mean the globe, right? All of those are really difficult things, so um I can't answer that for you right now, but I know that. Um, those are things that you have to wrestle with uh as you go through the process. Uh, talk, I'm going to talk about each of those three things here quickly. The elected officials, the 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 council members, the the chairperson of the of the board, the mayor. Those are the policymakers that are elected. Their decid- they they are, they are hired by the uh. By the citizens of of that place to make final decisions. And whether that's a final decision on a, on a quasi judicial matter, whether it's a a final decision on a legislative matter. Or even a decision on funding. All of those things are implementing factors of the comprehensive plan. So the vision of the community is a comp plan. It's a document that doesn't really do anything, right? It's in a three ring binder. It's got a lot of words. The doing comes in the work that you do. And and where the council or commission places its priorities and they do that through a funding apparatus. So there's a lot of different ways to initiate a comprehensive plan and make sure it is implemented. Um, and the and the policymakers uh have uh most of those levers at at their disposal. So now I'm going to have to roll through each of these. You'll see it's, I think it's a nice and illustrated. My ki- when my kids do slide decks, I don't know about yours, but they they fly everything around. I think this is pretty straightforward as far as the animation is concerned. There's no music, there's no dancing bears. So that elected officials, uh that body has a a series of of different obligations. One of the things that uh that they are they are charged with is appointing people uh to the uh to the commission, to these bodies. That uh that are are poised to make those good decisions. So they do need to respect and support your role. Um, that doesn't always mean that they're going to rubber stamp your decisions, and that's the hard part. We we go through all this effort and sometimes we get to that level and things um aren't necessarily uh. Uh, they don't, they don't, they don't adopt your recommendation, let's say, let's put it that way. So that can be a challenge. You feel like a lot of that work has has maybe gone by the wayside. They have a lot of other pieces in their mind that they are considering. And so our role in planning commission is a little more narrow and you know, that's why they're the elected officials and we're the we're the uh. Appointed uh volunteers. So um they, you know, throughout all of this, every every. Every piece of this uh process works best when people do their homework. You know, when you are prepared, when you come in on the on the front end and you've read the packet and you're you're ready for some good questions for staff. Um, that that's how this whole thing works. Same thing at the at the commissioner council level. So the planning commission is really created under that premise that. The community is the one who can objectively review and recommend sound regulations free of political influence. But it's a, it's a, it is a pretty neat little thing. And a- again, that buffer between uh the masses. Um, and and a filtration process uh before it gets to the the elected officials. So the the planning commission, it's not a regulatory body. You're not, you're writing regulations. You are reviewing regulations that staff as the technical leads have have written, um but you're you're an advisory group. You also have some some responsibilities. Some, sometimes, you know, you could, you could say that um you have to understand your lane. And and that's understanding that the that the council or the commission has a certain role and they have some prerogatives. They have, again, the ability to make a decision independent of the of the recommendations. I mean, let's be candid, the reality is, is if if a council or a commission consistently uh ignores the planning commission's recommendation. Then they're going to have a lot of turnover. That's just, that's just the reality. But that is, again, that's their prerogative as the elected official to do so. I know that when you have uh people come in and talk to you and they're passionate about the subject matter or the uh the question that is in front of you. Uh, it is, it is uh easy to be swayed by those stories. But it is also your responsibility to remember that there are people who are not in the room, people who don't necessarily have uh the the means to be there. Who also might have a perspective. So, you know, taking all of those things uh into place is pretty critical. So have that open mind, treat all do all parties with uh respect and strive to persuade rather than argue with them. Um, I think there is some deference to uh technical expertise within the staff. Uh, the staff has been kind of put together and and brought to bear on on issues based on their own background, their own. Uh, expertise and their their own um study of the regulations. So there, there certainly is um some deference that can be paid. I don't think that means you have to uh again, take that uh every word as gospel. I think that there's an expectation, at least in the commissions that I've worked with, there's an expectation that the planning commission has their own experiences and backgrounds. And and expertise to bear. And so we're, it's it's going to be a bit of a dialogue. Um, that's, that's been my experience. I think um. Across the state, um, there are varying levels of expertise, both with staff and with planning commissions. So again, in my experience, the best relationships have been those those dialogues that have that have occurred that says, hey. You know, I'm not so sure. Let me get back to you. Let me talk to the attorney. Let me, let's bring in a a third party. Or have, you know, having uh staff say, no, this is really, you know, fairly settled in in best available science or best management practices. This is how things are done. So that 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 that, you know, mature adult conversation back and forth. That's, that's when the relationships work best between the staff and 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 planning commission. So um. See what we have here. Good planning commissions, they really do have an annual work plan. Uh, there's good communication back and forth with the elected body. Uh, again, you know, you've read your packet ahead of time and are are prepared. And uh you welcome public involvement. Couple more tips. Uh, you're polite and patient, you know, I, you know, that whole thing with, you know, one mouth and two ears. Um, that that's, that is a a thing, right? It it really is important that we listen first um and uh and. Li- listen in in a way to absorb instead of listen for a way to attack, right? And and um, I think that's pretty, pretty critical on both ends, you know, both from the public and from the. From the commission level to to really pay attention to what's being said and um again, try to make a reasoned decision. You, some there, we'll, we'll talk about in a second. There are some times you don't have as much um latitude as you may like, right? There's, there's only certain matters that you are allowed to consider, you know, uh within the the confines of the regulations. So as much as you might want to pull in um some relevant outside factor. You're only kind of allowed to kind of decide within these these parameters. Uh, the chairperson, where's Mr. Casino? Where's that? All right, this is just for you. Everyone else can take a little little nap. Um, yeah, that the the chairpiece is pretty important and you know, if you, if you get to that position, there's, there's guidance. And you know, staff can help you with that as well, but um it's, it's what we would see in any board uh chair role. Where you kind of keep the meeting going, make sure there's equal time amongst the parties and and uh and and both commission members and staff. And and the public are all kind of allow their opportunity to to share information. So we'll pivot for a moment to planning staff. Um. Your your staffer, you're really your best resource and um. The, again, the better relationship you have with them, just like anything, the more you can trust what they're bringing you is their best work. A- and um, I don't, s- some, some planning commissions have a different tempo. They'll have a work session and then and then an actual uh real meeting, same thing with uh councils and commissions. Uh, most planning commissions around the state meet once a month and it's usually for a couple hours and that's it. And that, and in that timeframe, they're covering all the development review that there is needed. You know, they're they're uh making some progress on, you know, uh other plans, sub area plans, long range plans that are being briefed. Um, and they may be having a public hearing, you know, in the middle of that. So there's, there's a lot of dynamic activity within the planning commissions. But your staff is your best resource for for that. Yeah, go ahead.
We meet twice a month and maybe that's because it's a more populous county than some of the others in the state. If you get up into like Pearson King County, what what does that look like? With the planning commissions, are they meeting week like weekly perhaps?
Now, do you have a read on that? I I think twice a month is about the most I would see.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and some of the smaller places will go a couple months without a meeting depending on on the size. But yeah, I I I'm sure it could turn into a full time job. Most of those places have adjusted their protocols and their processes. So not as much goes through planning commission. Um, there's a little more um deference given to administrative decisions. We, we talked about that in a minute. I don't want to get too far ahead of myself. Um, so city or the council or or commission and planning commission obligations to staff. Um. Again, to keep those work priorities, uh workload priorities and schedule expectations in alignment with the resources available. I, this happens quite a bit that, you know, there are nine of you and there's only about, I think, nine staff, something about that. So you know, that's, that's a lot of ask of of uh of folks, so. So just try to keep that in mind. And that whole, like, you know, praise publicly and and criticize privately, that still applies with with staff. You know, if you love what they're doing and and they really knock it out of the park on a staff brief, you can tell them about it in the meeting. If not so much, maybe it's better, better held for a a different conversation offline. All right, a couple fun roles. I think that's orchestrator. I think that's what we've got there. A maestro even more than an orchestrator, yeah. I can't, I don't know if that's Lewis or Clark, but I, I think it's a pathfinder is what we're looking for there, pointing, pointing the way. They had to label that one. The researcher. The messenger. I think we probably could have got that without the, without the caption there. And that one, I know some of you could have, could have touched on. Speaking of messenger, I'm just the messenger of some of these slides too. I just gotta tell you. All right, the staff does have responsibility to you. They're supposed to present kind of objective analysis with and provide some reasonable alternatives with their professional recommendation based on both facts and best practices and past practices of that organization. Every organization's got legacy interpretation, administrative rules internal to that organization. Hey, this is the way it's been interpreted. You, 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 you put that in writing. So future applications, when they come through, are treated in the same, you know, fashion, transparent fashion. So that staff is kind of looking at all that. And when they're bringing things in front of you, that's, that's how they're doing that. And we just, you know, wanna wanna reiterate here that that they're bringing you information. You make a recommendation and then that recommendation goes on to the next level. And, and so even though the staff don't necessarily agree, that's what they're taking forward as as the planning commission's recommendation. So that's, that's kind of your ability to to comment on the process and and in inflect on the different aspects of that that decision. Some places have minority reports or they will ask staff for the the ability to explain, you know, maybe a six, three vote or something like that, something that's rather close. And some places have accommodations for that. And then just, you know, policy versus, you know, advising, you know, the elected side hired to do a job and the planning commission side asked to do, asked to volunteer and to do a job. I think, you know, that's, that's just how it is across the state. There, there, you're doing the the bulk of the work, right? You're doing a lot of the engagement with the community. They come, they kind of share. Depending on the the different plan that's in front of you, you're hearing all the information about a particular development, depending on your, on your role and you're, you're taking that that recommendation and or that denial. I mean, you're not actually denying it right in the meeting. You're just recommending denial. So it's either recommended approval, recommended denial or something in between, depending on each jurisdiction's rules. Talk a little bit about the hearings examiner. Most of the time, they're a seasoned planner or a a land use attorney. That, that's typically what you see in in those roles. Bigger jurisdictions like Thurston County have more than one because they have a lot of permit activity and certain things in certain places head there. You know, Valerie or or maybe it was mentioned earlier, was talking about takings, right? And regulatory takings are things that when you've applied so many regulations to a situation where they feel like they can't, they can't do development. There's a reasonable use exception for in in those types of cases. That's kind of like that little escape clause in in the code. And that's something that would go to the the hearings examiner. So those kind of judicial type of questions are where those things end up. There are, you know, I, I mentioned that the the binder is and the comp plan kind of being a twenty year vision, but there are ways to implement that. And and so that's what this gets at here, that the whole thing really does rest, I think, on the development and infrastructure and the plan is kind of driving how that, how that happens. But the regulations are only a piece of it, you know, the regulations just kind of inform what to do. And then the the development and infrastructure is reacting to to that regulatory guidance. So there's three different types of land use decisions, legislative, quasi judicial and administrative. Most of the time administrative is is not coming before you. You get those top two generally. Because there's less, there's less discretion that needs to be used from, from your side on the the top, on the on the administrative, that that bottom line one, it's mostly those, those first two. Here's that typical steps in the legislative process. There is an amendment process, as was mentioned, no more than once a year unless there's an emergency. And so that, you know, most places have a tempo of when the window for that opportunity for for amending the plan is. And then those, those all kind of come in at once during that window from the community or even self-initiated from the jurisdiction. And then those are all evaluated together in order to make sure that you are are taking into account the kind of the comprehensiveness of the of the change. And so as part of that is reviewed by staff, it's public involvement. It's, it's your recommendation to the elected officials. And then the, then the additional public hearings at the, at that council or commission level and adoption. And and sometimes those are appealed depending on, well, in this case, since it's legislative, we go to the hearing board. I don't know, you, you didn't talk too much about the hearings board. We didn't get there, right? All right. That's for extra credit at ten o'clock. Yeah, at least. So I think, I think we're, we're nearing the end here. The public involvement really is the foundation for planning. We are all just, you know, imperfect representatives and mouthpieces for a bunch of other people who live in our community. And so the, the more you kind of forecast and and foreshadow and kind of show your cards for how you're gonna do stuff, usually the better off we are. And so that, that's the, the ability of the planning commission to take in that information. It really is critical in the whole land use planning process. And so there's a number of different techniques we use now for for public engagement and to help us make good, good decisions. But that process really does need to be understood by the community. And so most, again, it's like publishing the public engagement plan that commerce has asked for almost all the things they give grants for now, you have to kind of do that as one of the first steps. So the general public is made up of of a number of different groups, as you know, long-term residents, different perspectives. You got the business community in there with their ideas. You have environmental community. You have the development community. The media has their, you know, their own interests and in the process as well. And so there's things we need to do in order to manage those public hearings. And most of the time this falls on the chair. Also, most of the time staff will provide a script, you know, for for the chair to go through. And and that script can be, you know, shared with the rest of the planning commission. But it, it's, you know, we've all been to these where you get your three minutes. It's usually three minutes. And, you know, state your name and address and 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 you speak to them. So it's all about making sure everyone has an opportunity. And and there's lots of examples of continued public hearings and, you know, hundreds and hundreds of testimonies. So it, 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 it's a big part of what planning commissions do. I might mention here that this last bullet, I, I think is interesting. May arrange the order of speakers so the testimony is heard in the most logical groupings. Proponents, opponents, adjacent owners, et cetera. I might also suggest that because most of our meetings are hybrid now, that you bounce back and forth between in-person and on online. I know some places would prefer to start and have the people who've shown up physically to roll through all of their testimony. But many times now, there are people who can't make the meeting physically. And I, and so I would, I would suggest you'd consider in a public hearing setting, maybe bouncing back and forth between the online testimony and the in-person testimony.
Before they speak though, how do you know if they're proponents or opponents?
Sometimes they sign up on, there's like two different signups. The, if you're gonna speak in in favor of it and you're gonna speak against it, what, there's two separate signups. Or you'll indicate a box. It's just, it's just a, it's a preference, how different commissions do it.
Online folks, you're not gonna get that explanation.
Unless they put it in the chat.
Yeah, and sometimes actually, if it's a public hearing, you would be required to sign. Most of the time you're required to kind of sign in or or in some times you have to provide your name. Like today's Zoom meeting, you just provide your name and an email address and you'll get in with it. And then, you know, that your name will pop up on your, on your video. So we're, we've gotten pretty good at at the online stuff, I think. And it's, it's, it's really increased the public participation, at least, you know, from where my perspective. We covered this pretty much already. There are gonna be people who are angry or perpetually challenging city or county government. So just, you know, bring your patience and let, you know, let's use this opportunity to to remind people that we agree on way more than we disagree on. So and as you make this, as you make the decision, you know, I think these last two slides are really, really important. You have to have a basis for your decision and staff will provide you with language around the findings of fact and conclusions of law. But you, you really need to pay attention to the facts and and try to stick to those. So you have grounds for making your recommendation. Because it can be the difference between success or failure at at an appeal level. So this last, this last slide here, solid record is key for land use decisions. The record will need to include the application and the documentation and the CIPA and staff report and other correspondence. Now staff's taking care of that. And then, you know, it's, it's your job in the deliberation, you know, to make sure you have grounds again and reasons for approving or denying a particular application. So are there questions on roles and responsibilities? Do we have a few minutes, Val? All right, either questions online or questions in the room? Yeah.
Questions that that sort of relate to, you know, doing our business as planning commissioners. I'm wondering if you can give a recommendation about jurisdictions that have done a good job with annual work plans that we might be able to.
Yeah, the questions about annual work plans and is there a good example out there? I don't know what most professions are like, but I, I tend to think planners steal from each other all the time. And I know we're being recorded and I don't often give Olympia props, but I do like their work plan. I thought there, I thought Olympia's planning commission work plan was pretty well done. Most of the cities around here actually do a good job. Lacey, Tumwater, they're, they're all doing a good job. And I think, again, it's just a matter of outlining what it is that's on your plate. And and so that allows not only you to, you know, think ahead and plan ahead, but the community can as well. Said, okay, I, you know, even though I'm out of town this block of time, I know that it's gonna be heard in the spring or, you know, in the fall or what, what have you. So I'd say most of the cities locally do a good job and I haven't seen the county, so I can't say whether it is or isn't.
Annual work plan is defined by the dockets that are approved by the board of county commissioners. I think that's kind of an helpful use of terminology.
Right. And so there are, there are two, there are two divisions of planning, right? I mean, you've got your long range and your current, your current planning. There's gonna be bits and pieces from each of those that are gonna end up on a planning commission docket. And so in a place like Thurston County that has a very, very full plate with things that they are mandated to do, there's not gonna be a lot of discretion for for independent things, I think, put in there. In in the cities, as and I think I told someone else, I'm, I, I'm the planner for a city at Tonino. There's a relatively open field for the types of things we can consider in a, in a year. And the other reason is because we don't have a bunch of development activities. So it's not like every meeting is taken up with a public hearing.
So Dan, we do have a question online.
Okay.
Could you give an example of a quasi judicial versus administrative decision?
The question is, can I get, can I get an example of a quasi judicial versus a legislative? Administrative. Can I, can I kick that to you? A question between the quasi judicial and administrative? It's, the quasi judicial in particular is a beast. And it's not a, it's not a great process to go through because it's very confusing. And Lacey just kind of got themselves wrapped up in that about two months ago. And so maybe I could send it over there for.
All right, is this, is this working? Okay.
Speak up towards the green light.
So I think the, the biggest distinction between, between the two would be so quasi judicial is it's almost like a court hearing, right? So the decision maker could be like a hearing examiner or the county commission or or the city council is a body. And they are, you know, weighing, they're deciding the rights of specific parties in front of them. And so there's, it's, you know, there's a record that's being created that they have to make a decision based off of. There are appears, appears of fairness doctrine issues, which I'll get into in my presentation next, in which decision makers can't interact with the parties while it's pending. You're basically like a judge. And an administrative decision is basically where, it could be the same, it could be a hearing examiner again. It's still a decision-making person or body. But all they're doing is deciding whether or not that, like a project meets the requirements in the code. So there's not any discretion there. You're not making a discretionary judgment call. You're just determining whether or not an application complies with the regulations. And if so, yep, good to go. If not, no, and here's why. But there's no discretion. So that discretionary component is the key difference.
Did you say that a planning commission like ours that only makes recommendations falls into either of those categories? Or would we just be legislative only?
I'm not sure, to be honest, because I think planning commissioners sometimes do have, it depends on, it depends on if the planning commission has final approval authority over anything or if you're only recommending stuff up. So if you're only recommending stuff up, then you won't, you won't be in that quasi judicial position because you're not ultimately determining the legal rights and responsibilities of like parties before you. You'll make recommendations. That's my, that would be my understanding, but the final decision maker is the one that's sort of like the judge in that situation.
Yeah, quasi judicial is not a fun place to be in. So if you're not there, don't complain. I don't think, if you have, you have a closed record, you have a lot of limitations. Some of it's infuriating because some, you know, you know, you, in Louis County, we couldn't even let the planning commissioners go to the site to investigate it on their own because that's outside the record.
Yeah, somebody comes up to the grocery store, knowing your position and starts talking to you about it. You have to immediately disengage. It could be messy. Depending on how long that conversation happens, you might have to disclose it in public. And again, I'll go into some of this, what I'll talk about next. But, yeah, the quasi judicial stuff can, I mean, it's basically like court. You know, that's why it's called quasi judicial. So all of a sudden, you're sort of like a judge. And so there's a lot of rules around that that get very tricky.
We'll take one more question and then one for the next.
He asked me to ask a question.
Okay.
It's the one that I asked earlier about, again, this is real specific for us on the county planning commission, but it might go to the city ones too. Like, could you explain in a little more detail the planning commission's role in the public involvement process? And how, how engaged planning commissions should be? Because because at this point, I think there's some uncertainty about whether we can or should be more engaged in providing advice on the, on the planning, on the public involvement process. You know, I, I feel that we should be involved in that fairly actively. And related to that, my sort of second very practical question is about planning commission resources. Because, you know, we in the, in the county, and I don't know about other ones, don't really have our own resource base. You know, basically, my understanding of our resources is basically staff time. And it's not real clear because we don't have our own budget or anything like that. So we, we work, you know, I think the, the So we, we work, you know, I think the, the phrase is, is in conjunction with the planning department. And, and how that feeds into what kind of resources we have, uh, is, is not entirely clear to me at least. And so maybe you can explain that and how that might relate to things like, you know, just as a practical thing, like say we want to be more engaged in look at, you know, being involved in, uh, providing recommendations on, uh, the public participation process.
Yeah. So the question was about, uh, the planning commission's level of engagement with the public participation plan. Um, and also their role with staff, uh, and, and how, you know, they kind of work together and, um, I, 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 I don't. Yeah, and the resource base, you know, I, I can only talk about the, the planning commissions that I'm familiar with. I'm not as familiar with, uh, with, with the counties, but, um, my experience has been that most of the time the planning commission is in a reactive position that, 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 that you, you serve. Um, uh, well, you really do serve at the pleasure of the elected officials. And there is some latitude for the elected officials to, uh, adjust the roles and which things come before the planning commission. Um, so, so I think there's some room there for, for that, but i- in my experience, the planning commission would, uh, maybe advise and consent on a, uh, a, a, a public engagement plan, but wouldn't, you know, be asked to draft it. Um, or wouldn't be, uh, allowed to really redline it. I mean, you could redline and give it back. There wouldn't be any expectation that staff would need to, you know, follow up with those red lines because it's just, you know, it's, it's advice. So, um, that, that's been my experience and, uh, and again, it's a, it's an important role, uh, and there is some flexibility uh, for the elected body to tweak that, um, or provide better guidance perhaps about what, what it is that they do want you to do. Um, but, you know, again, you're, you are, um, volunteers and you, you're appointed. And so we have to be also kind of cognizant that there's, there's the opportunity to pack the planning commission depending on what the elected officials are like. And so there's room for misuse of this role. So we, that's why most of the time it's not overly empowered. Um, because at the end of the day, um, you're not elected. All right. Thanks for what you do.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I'll also add, um, as a suggestion, uh, when I was with Benton County as a associate, um, or was this when I was the Yakima, I was a city of Yakima employee. Um, the planning commission chair would meet and go to the board, uh, the city council like once a quarter and just kind of confirm like, okay, this is the work plan that we're working on. Is it still what y'all thought we were going to be working on? Is there anything else you want us to, uh, research or be investigating? Um, and then that can actually kind of set the tone to, to make sure that, um, you're aligned. And then I just want to reiterate something I said in my slide, um, about the comp planning, um, is that, that, that transparency? And so if you're working on something and redlining something, um, in your own, like confines of your own home, and then you're bringing it up, you're not doing that in a public process anymore. You're only doing it, um, in, in, um, maybe behind the scenes. And so as much as you can have those open discussions about stuff that you're considering, where everyone else can hear your reasoning why, um, and how you came to the conclusions that you came to, those findings of facts, that's really a great tool that the planning commission has to use. Um, and so you're, you're able to, um, do the work, but then have it be part of the open process and not be closed door, behind closed doors type work, if that makes sense. Okay, so we're a little bit behind time, but we have, um, excellent last segment for you on open government laws. And once we're done with this segment, I actually have certificate that, uh, some of you may be hoping to get, um, to, to prove that you were here and you did this work and you, um, came and conquered. So I'm going to bring Jake back up to talk. Um, we're going to give him 40 minutes. Uh, so, um, yeah, we'll do that. Ready? Thanks.
No. All right. Last but not least, um, so I'm going to talk about, um, a couple of, uh, open government laws, starting with the Open Public Meetings Act, and I'll try to be quicker than last time and leave some, some time for some Q and A. All right. So first of all, why train? Um, first of all, because the OPMA, I'm going to refer to the Open Public Meetings Act, so the OPMA. Uh, it's required for members of a governing body within 90 days of taking the oath of office or assuming duties. And every four years thereafter, it's also just a good idea if you are, you know, it, on a board or commission or an active citizen to understand, um, what goes into, uh, the OPMA requirements, what types of meetings, um, specifically, uh, planning commissions are called out in the OPMA, um, as, um, uh, as a body that needs to comply with these provisions, even though, um, most other advisory, uh, boards and commissions do not. But planning commissions, because they're so important, um, do actually have to comply. So it's important for specifically planning commissioners to understand, uh, what's in this, um, uh, what's in this law. And as Val mentioned, we have certificates for that. Um, so big picture, um, kind of stepping back and, you know, as we discussed, there's some nuances in the OPMA. Uh, but at the end of the, at the end of the day, um, the big picture is that all meetings of the governing body of a public agency need to be open and public. Um, and there needs to be an emphasis on allowing members of the public to attend. Um, because as, you know, as we've sort of been discussing throughout this process, you know, local government really values itself on transparency. It's the closest government to the, you know, the people, it's dealing with everyday issues. And so its meetings need to be open and accessible. There's very significant consequences for, uh, violating the OPMA, including, um, action taken, um, during a meeting that violates the OPMA is null and void. Um, and then there are, um, uh, you can be personally liable, um, up to, for 500 and up to a thousand dollars thereafter, uh, for attending, um, uh, meetings in violation of the OPMA, knowing, knowing they're in violation. Um, and then folks who prevail in an OPMA lawsuit are awarded attorney's fees and costs, which can skyrocket very quickly. Um, so very important, uh, that you comply with the OPMA. And so to begin, um, OPMA has a very, it's a very broad scope. And we start with looking at the definition of a meeting, right? We all have the idea of a meeting in our head, uh, you know, because we do those all the time, uh, you know, twice a month at least. Um, or once a month depending. Um, but what, what does, that's not just what a meeting is. A meeting is actually defined much more broadly. And that is under the statute, just action plus quorum. So breaking this down further, what is an action? An action is the transaction of official business, including but not limited to, uh, these, uh, bullet points here are right out of the statute. And you can see there, the very last bullet point is final action. So action is not just final action, right? It's not just taking a vote on a recommendation, or if you're the, the council or commission, you know, taking final action on a decision. Um, it's all of these things, including very vague concepts like deliberations, discussions, considerations, reviews. If there's a quorum of your body doing any of those things, you are in a public meeting. And if you have not complied with the notice provisions and, and everything else, you are doing something in violation of the OPMA. So, um, I like to have this slide, uh, up early because, um, it, it sort of demonstrates the breadth of what we're talking about here. We're not just talking about the, the typical, you know, regular meeting that's been noticed and has gone out, uh, to the public. We're talking about these types of situations. Um, and then breaking final action down even further, final action is a collective positive or negative decision or an actual vote. So even that gets a little more nuanced. And then we'll talk about that a little bit more, uh, later when we get to some issues with executive session. But, um, you know, final action isn't just taking a vote. It's if a quorum sort of wink, winks at each other about how you're going to move forward without taking an actual vote. Um, you've taken final action too. So, um, the legislature has made a point to really try to identify ways that, um, this kind of thing could get, uh, folks could get around some, some of these provisions by trying to be as broad as possible. So it's important to keep that in mind as we, um, walk through this. So we've gone over what a meeting is, um, what is a public agency? Um, given the audience, I'll just say that, uh, uh, planning commissions, uh, are called out in addition to civil service commissions as sub agencies, uh, created by legislation that are subject to the OPMA. But, um, it's also state agencies, county, city, school districts, um, pretty much any municipal, um, municipal corporation created by statute, but planning commissions, um, in particular. Oh gosh, keep doing that. Um, and then what is the governing body? Um, so the governing body, again, for planning commissions, that's, it's relatively easy. It's the planning commission. Um, but when we're looking at a bigger organization and you're trying to identify, uh, what is the body that actually is subject to the OPMA? It's a multi-member board, commission, committee, council, or other policy or rulemaking body. Um, this gets important when we talk about, uh, committees. Um, so even though there might not be a quorum, um, of the full body, if there's a committee, um, that acts on behalf of the governing body by say, conducting a, a public hearing or taking testimony, or again, doing any one of those things in the definition of, of an action. Um, then that committee is also subject to the OPMA, um, even if there isn't a quorum there. So that's an important note. Um, you can't create a committee, um, to do important things, um, and have it be fewer than a quorum to, to get out of the, uh, uh, the requirements here. So here are some examples of likely meetings. Um, I'll, I'll do another shout out to MRSC, which, uh, has some great resources on going over, especially in the age of, um, technology and especially since COVID, where so much has been moved online. Um, some example meetings, um, because again, this, given the breadth of the statute, um, meetings can happen very easily. So, um, email conversations, so serial electronic conversations has been the subject of, um, a lot of litigation. And so it's important to, to call this one out. So if, uh, a meeting doesn't have to happen all at once. Uh, if you, if, if a quorum of a body is texting each other one at a time, kind of playing, uh, you know, the, the telephone game. Uh, but the thread of that conversation is the same subject, then you're having a meeting. Um, and, and so you can't get around the quorum issue by having one member call or text another to describe their position, have that member call someone else or text someone else and then, you know, say the two of us feel this way. What do you think? You know, that you're creating a meeting, uh, once you hit a quorum. Uh, gatherings involving a quorum to hear stuff like state of the city, county presentations. Um, there might be a quorum in this room tonight. Um, the quorum itself isn't what makes the meeting though. Again, it has to be a quorum taking action. So, um, you know, events like this are obviously very common, even, even things like, um, uh, you know, if there's, if there are retreats, you know, if there's a, a new board or commission that's been elected and you, you go on a retreat to sort of talk about the mission. Um, you know, in the goals of the organization. Um, then a safe thing to do, and I'm not sure if, if this happened this evening. Uh, a safe thing to always do is to just notice it, um, as a special meeting. There's no harm in doing that. Oh, and that was done tonight? Great. Um, even for things like, like retreats and stuff like that, oftentimes they'll, they'll just notice it. I mean, you can try to be careful and say, um, but especially if you're hearing just passive information from a speaker or something like that, um, you can try to be safe and just stay away from taking action. Um, but it's always a good idea just to notice it. Oh yeah. So again, uh, MRSC has some great, um, great tips on this. Uh, uh, another common, uh, issue that can, that can quickly spiral is, uh, email, especially in preparation for, uh, like a meeting. And so oftentimes, you know, staff will email out to, uh, to the, the commission or, or the council or whomever. Um, you know, here's the agenda, here's what we're going to be working on. Um, and if all the members, or at least a quorum, are sort of emailed at once, you know, it doesn't, doesn't take much for one of the members who feels particularly passionate maybe about something that's on the agenda to reply all, uh, and start voicing some, you know, some feelings about what's going to be on the agenda. And maybe there's a response and suddenly you have a meeting because you have a quorum of the bodies sort of emailing back and forth. Um, and so there's, MRSC has some helpful tips. Again, my, a lot of jurisdictions incorporate these. Um, it could be that, uh, members receive things like, uh, agendas by email individually. Um, so it's not, uh, everyone on the same email thread. Uh, there could be things like in the first line of the email or in the subject line, you know, for informational purposes only, do not respond, stuff like that. So yeah, just, I won't go over all of them, but there's, there's a lot of good practice tips there on MRSC, um, on how to avoid a meeting in those kinds of situations. Uh, so I'm going to switch gears and get into notice. Before I do, any questions about sort of what constitutes a meeting, um, that kind of thing? So, uh, there's, uh, two types of meetings now, kind of, kind of a third, um, that's been created since COVID. But, um, uh, they each have their own, uh, notice requirements. And so the, the main one is the regular meeting notice requirements, and that's held in accordance with a fixed schedule. Um, usually it's agendas must be, uh, made available at least 24 hours in advance online. Unless, and these provisions have actually changed recently to make it much harder to not post, not have to post the agenda online 24 hours in advance. So these, these three, um, these three provisions have to be met, um, in order for you to not have to, um, post it online 24 hours in advance. Cities and towns are required to notify, um, public of preliminary agendas. Um, there's no restriction on the type of business to be transacted despite the notice requirement. So often, in fact, one of the first, um, things that, that occur at a meeting is the chair will sort of ask if there's anything that should be added or amended on, on the, uh, meeting agenda. There's nothing wrong with that. Um, and you can even go into executive session, even if it's not, even if it's not noticed. So, um, you know, regular meetings are more to, you know, provide that general, um, that general notice to the public, but it doesn't really prescribe, um, exactly what you can and can't do at that meeting versus, uh, special meeting. Um, so special meetings are, are not regular meetings. Um, so there, there are meetings that are not held in accordance with the regular meeting provisions. Um, and they can be called by the presiding officer or a majority of the members. Uh, they have to be noticed, obviously. Um, and that notice must specify the date, time, place, and the business to be transacted. Um, now at a special meeting, you can take action. Um, again, that broad definition of action on things that were not noticed, um, in the special, uh, meeting notice, you just can't take final action on anything that wasn't noticed. Um, so that's, that's the difference there. Um, you have to, notice must be delivered within 24 hours to each member, um, and media outlets that have, uh, on file requested to know about special meetings. Um, there's some different notice requirements too. Um, I think the legislature has recognized that, um, sometimes it's special meetings occur and, and, and some notice provisions, um, you know, might not be able to be obtained. So if, if the organization doesn't have a website, no full-time employees, uh, or no, no employee whose duty it is to maintain a website, then, um, uh, then you don't have to comply with the online, um, notice posting. And then you have to note, you have to prominently display the notice at the main entrance, um, of where the meeting usually happens. If it's happening somewhere else, so you can't sort of switch where you're going to meet, um, and avoid the public. You have to post where you usually meet, uh, where you're actually meeting. Um, uh, if it's not remote and if it can be done safely, and so that if it can be done safely, um, I'll get to you in a minute. Or maybe next. Oh yeah, meetings during an emergency. So COVID, um, the COVID era sort of saw a lot of changes. Uh, first through, uh, governor, um, uh, uh, governor executive action. Um, and a lot of that has been incorporated into the OPMA. There's sort of a recognition that, um, there was a need to be able to be more flexible during an emergency for, uh, uh, these regulations. And also that, um, jurisdictions were able to respond to, you know, the times and, and looks like we can actually do a lot of this electronically now. So the OPMA has been sort of updated in light of, of COVID. Um, and so now it's part of statute, uh, that if, if the local government declares, um, that or determines that it cannot hold an in-person meeting safely, um, you're allowed to either, uh, hold it at a physical location and limit public attendance uh, or go fully remote, um, so long as there's a cost-free option for attendance. Um, there's different notice requirements here, um, sort of in recognition of if there's safety issues. Um, that, you know, notice is not required for these types of special meetings if they might involve injury or damage to people or property. Um, you know, thinking here is also about, you know, if there's special meetings to respond to storms, you know, uh, weather events, things like that as well. So different notice requirements for an emergency. Um, there's also recent changes on public comment at regular meetings. Um, so now at every regular meeting at which final action is being taken, there is a statutory requirement, uh, that the agency provide an opportunity for public comment. Public comment is not otherwise statutorily required, although it's obviously encouraged and, um, uh, good practice for, um, you know, for the intent of, of the OPMA, which is to make it open and public. Um, but now it's in statute. So if, if you're going to. But now it's in statute, so if you're going to be taking final action on a matter, you need to provide public comment at or before that meeting. What is kind of interesting about the way it's written is you don't have to connect the final action being taken to the comments received. So you can't say, you know, we're going to take action on, you know, adopting our comprehensive plan update, but we're only going to accept public comments on, you know, this rezone or something like that. So there's no like connection requirement between what you're taking action on and the comment. So that gets a little tricky, but. And then when feasible, provide opportunities for individuals with difficulty attending in person to provide oral comments remotely. Again, now that, now that there's a statutory requirement to accept comments when final action is taken, there's also a requirement to at least make a good faith effort to make sure that everyone who wants to provide comments can. Executive session, this is where a lot of organizations get into trouble because executive session is sort of, open public meetings are intended to make sure that final action and all action is taken in front of the public. And executive session is an allowance for agencies to take some sort of action, although not final action, behind closed doors, right? Outside of the view of the public, there's a legislative recognition that sometimes there are certain subjects which the public is actually harmed if it's being discussed in public and open for everyone. So, but because it is sort of against the overall intent of the bill, there are some very specific requirements for how you go into executive session. And a lot of these have become sort of standardized. And again, MRSC has some really good lists and scripts on what you need to do to enter into executive session and the type of action you can take. And a lot of jurisdictions have sort of baked this into their procedures. So hopefully nobody's sort of starting from scratch on these. But the basics are that before you convene an executive session, the presiding officer must announce the purpose of and the time the executive session is over. Announcing the purpose doesn't have to be detailed. Again, you don't have to sort of explain everything you're going to do in executive session because that's sort of going against what you're going into. But you sort of, common practice is to cite the provision in the executive session statute and say, we're going in to discuss this. The reason why the time is important is because the public decides to leave. If you're going to go into executive session for an hour, the public should have the opportunity to leave, stretch their legs, use the bathroom, and know when you're going to reconvene. And so if you are reconvening early, if turns out you were able to finish up quicker, you got to wait for that hour. You can't, you can't tell the public, we're going to be in executive session for three hours. Do something quickly. And then, and then, you know, while the room is empty, get a bunch of controversial stuff done. You have to wait until you said you'd come back. And then similarly, if you, if the body is going to take longer, you have to come back out when you said you were going to reconvene, explain that you're still in executive session and offer a new time. So again, the legislature was really trying to make sure that no one was getting, doing any funny business with this stuff. This is where I spoke earlier about final action being both an actual vote and also collective understanding on how to proceed. That comes in, that's important here because executive session, you're not allowed to take final action in executive session. And you can't get around that by basically taking a straw poll of members in executive session and then coming back out to vote. There's some case law on that that basically says, you know, if in executive session, you're sort of feeling out where everyone is and then sort of understand what the vote's going to be. And then sort of open public meeting is now sort of a formality. You know, you're violating the spirit and intent of the law. So no straw polls, that's also final action. And then a new requirement is that executive session purpose must be entered into the minutes. It's a new requirement. Here's some common executive session topics. There's a long, actually pretty long list in the statute, because again, they get pretty specific about what you can do, so that necessarily just makes for a longer list. But some common ones, evaluating qualifications of applicants for public employment or reviewing the performance of a public employee. You're allowed to do that. There's privacy concerns that are involved there. Again, that's sort of a more of the agency acting as an employer. And so you're allowed to do certain things in executive session. However, discussion of anything that's generally applicable, such as compensation benefits, general employment conditions, that must be done in public. You can't have those conversations in the context of a specific employee to get around having difficult conversations in public. Litigation is obviously one that you can sort of handle some of that in executive session. But you do have to be able to show that any discussion must, in public, would present danger of adverse legal or financial risk to the agency. So you can't, you can't go into executive session just because the, you know, the city or county attorney is there and claim, you know, litigation or, you know, attorney-client privilege and go into executive session. There has to be, you have to be able to make a showing if challenged that if we talked about what we wanted to talk to our lawyer about in an open hearing or open meeting, then we'd be adversely impacted. And then conveying real estate. There's a Port of Vancouver State Supreme Court case a couple of years ago now, but this can get pretty tricky, too, because you can consider, in executive session, you can consider site selection or acquisition. If you're, so if you're going to purchase property, then you can talk about that in executive session if public knowledge that you're considering purchasing this property would, you know, increase the price. And then alternatively, work, it's kind of tricky. If you're considering the minimum price at which you're going to offer it, then, and public knowledge would cause a decrease in price, then executive session only extends to the discussion of the bottom line, of the factors that went into your decision to set the price, but the actual price has to be made in public. These are very specific situations that I don't think a planning commission is going to get into. But anyway, just understanding that when you're dealing with matters of transactional real estate, there's some, there's some very nuanced issues with executive session. So, but there's a full list citation there, and again, MRSC has some great great resources. Okay, so next, obvious fairness. Fairness, before we move on to that, any questions about the OPMA?
Here and or online?
All righty, so appearance of fairness. So we kind of talked about this before when discussing quasi-judicial actions. So the appearance of fairness doctrine applies to quasi-judicial actions. So again, those are, those are permit application decisions that impact the rights of specific parties in front of you. So again, that's a, that's a permit for a plat, a subdivision, CUP, site-specific rezone. Somebody's coming before you wanting to do something with their property. That's quasi-judicial. A legislative action is comprehensive plan amendments, area-wide rezones, issues that affect the public generally and not specific parties. And so what are the rules? Again, I kind of went into this earlier. You basically are a judge, so you can't be during the pendency of that issue. No talking with proponents or opponents of that decision. And it's, and it's pretty strict. And if that's, let's see, yeah, so the fix is the next one. Yeah, so you can't be talking about it. There's some tests here. Would a disinterested person feel that impartiality has been violated? Are there, and then also are there just business interests, family interests related to the, relating to the matter? Again, the sort of common example here is what do you do if someone approaches you at the grocery store or something and wanting to talk about the hearing? So if you're in a, if you're in a situation where there is a, there is a quasi-judicial matter before the planning commission, which again, I sometimes there may be. But, and sometimes, you know, I was mentioning, sometimes planning commissions can sort of serve multiple roles. I don't know if they do here. But if there's, if there is something that's coming for the planning commission that's quasi-judicial, then you are required to follow these rules. And that's also why, you know, oftentimes jurisdictions will sort of avoid this by hiring hearing examiners. And that is just common practice, that's best practice. I mean, at the end of the day, you want to, you want to get yourself as an elected official or an appointed official out of that space. Because as was mentioned, in a lot of times, these are inherently political positions for very controversial, you know, like we were talking about the airport earlier, sometimes entire campaigns are around it. And so while, while that, while campaign, there's some rules around campaigning because there's some other issues there that you don't want to infringe on. It just gets really messy. And so oftentimes, the hiring of a hearing examiner to be a non-elected, you know, sort of an independent, again, basically acting as a judge to develop a record and sort of take the heat as the judge in the case and take that away from some of the elected and appointed officials is a smart way to go because you really avoid a lot of these problems. But there are fixes, so if there is ex parte communication, and that just again means talking to, talking to somebody outside the hearing, that there's a time limit challenge. So if someone wants to challenge an action based on that there was a violation of, you know, ex parte communication, there's some sort of violation of appearance of fairness, then, then that has to be raised when that ex parte communication, you know, occurred or reasonably thereafter. You can't, somebody can't know about what happened and sit on it, you know, for a period of time and then sort of wait for the ideal moment to bring it and do the most harm. And then what you do, you know, if somebody does come up to you at a grocery store and start talking about something and you try to disengage and for whatever reason, it just didn't work and you think there might be a problem, what you do is you bring it to the hearing, poll the board, just say what happened. Opposing party has to be given the opportunity to rebut the substance of the communication. So the person who was talking to you or maybe other folks who were there have an opportunity to say, you know, this is what happened and offer the opportunity to object to your participation. If there are objections, then you must recuse yourself from participating and leave the room. So it's just about being open, disclosing what happened. And then, you know, if the case may be that you can't participate, you can't participate. An exception, though, is that if your lack of participation suddenly deprives the board of quorum, then you're allowed to proceed, notwithstanding the issue. But again, this is also assuming that you have put everything on the record and have been, you know, sort of open and transparent about it. Otherwise, you know, similar to OPMA, there's a appearance of fairness challenge. That action is void. The final action is delayed, there's potential civil damages. If there's sort of that knowledge, like you knew that you were violating these laws and went forward anyway, so some big consequences. But, but yeah, there's some exceptions as well. Campaign statements, like I said earlier, that's, you know, we don't want to basically, if you ran on something important, get elected or get, you know, if, if something was really important to you and that's why you got, you know, involved in the planning commission or something like that, you can't then be deprived of the ability to participate in any of those proceedings. So campaign statements, campaign contributions before becoming a member can't be used against you. And prior participation in an advisory action. So, you know, if you have, if you're on the planning commission and you have aspirations of being on a county commission or a city council and something that you advised on and voted a certain way on a recommendation comes before you in a different capacity, then that, your prior involvement as an advisor doesn't, doesn't, doesn't trigger these issues. So that's, it's pretty straightforward. I mean, at the end of the day, it's use common sense to, you know, if you think that you've been, you know, if somebody has come up to you and it's just better safe than sorry. You know, it's all about, again, it's all about transparency, it's all about openness, doing it, you know, sort of on the record. And worst case scenario is you recuse yourself and the decision moves forward. Yes?
It mentioned recuse yourself and leave the room. Is the leave the room part required?
Yeah, I think it actually is in the statute. I have to go back and look. I think maybe the thinking being, you know, I was sort of describing innocent situations. There might be more of a nefarious one where maybe a certain member has kind of an outsized interest in a certain matter, maybe has an intimidating effect on others. Sort of maybe glaring at people as their vote comes up, you know, something like that. So I think sort of a better safe than sorry, just kind of get them out of the space, I think probably was the intent there.
I mean, we recently had a situation where a member offered to recuse themselves because they had a, like a professional relationship with somebody that was asking for zoning change and just, you know, I think one said, does anybody want me to recuse myself? And correct me if I'm wrong, I think just one member of the body said, yeah, you know, that might be for the best. And so he did, but he didn't leave. And I felt like it was very appropriate, the way it was handled.
Well, to follow on to that, I mean, it sounds like, like for us, for the, for the county planning commission, it sounds like the appearance of fairness doctrine really doesn't apply if we're not doing the quasi.
Because we're advisors. Well, what's, what's a little complicated, and this is where some like more nuanced knowledge of what comes before each body is important. The statute, I think the citation is in here. It does list planning commissions as body, but it also says that it applies to quasi-judicial actions. So, so I think it's sort of throwing in planning commissions that engage in quasi-judicial actions. So I think that, and then the other point is, I mean, with respect to your example, too, I mean, no harm, no foul, if there was a challenge to that, it's not timely anymore. But yeah, I'd have to go back and look at the statute to see if the leave the room is in there, but I think it is. And so best practice would be just to leave the room in that case. All right, last one, I believe, is Public Records Act. So Public Records Act, any other questions before we move on? All right, so Public Records Act, similar, the intent here is free and open examination of public records, open to the public. Even if, you know, records are embarrassing or inconvenient, the public has a right to know, there's a presumption that records are public. And there's a number of exemptions that apply. But there's a strong presumption that local government records are public and that folks can view them. It applies to state, local governments, agencies that are the functional equivalent of public agencies. And so I honestly can't really think of great examples. I mean, I, I know that I previously worked for like, for example, like private law firms that were hired by municipal corporations to do work, including public records work. And so to the extent you're, you know, you're sort of working for, you know, communicating with members of a governing body, you know, that can be subject to the Public Records Act, but limited extent the legislature, they do not apply to court records, private organizations or persons. There is a, so some agency requirements, point of public records officer. So, you know, the officer is sort of the one that makes sort of calls on a lot of these public records questions. There's adoption of procedures to protect public records from damage and disorganization. There's also retention, I think there's a slide on this later, there's retention requirements ensuring that public records, you know, sort of stick around an agency possession for a certain amount of time. And then procedures to provide full access to public records, such as by providing an index of available records. This is, this is a great, a great way to sort of have commonly requested type records available easily. As I'll talk about in a minute, one way you can respond to a records request is to provide the agency website where that record can be found. And so if you've got, you know, comprehensive plans and you know, all of the legislative record leading up to, you know, adoption of a comprehensive plan amendment or all the, you know, the documents that supported a CEPA determination, you know, if that's all up online, you know, that's, that's great and you can, you can use that. Websites themselves, too, are public records. And so, you know, it's just, it's important to keep that in mind, that sort of how you manage your website has implications for the Public Records Act. And then also procedures to provide timely action on public records requests. There's some statutory requirements on when you, when you have to respond and the substance of that response, which I'll get to in a moment. So making sure there's policies in place to make sure. to make sure that that sort of occurs without having to reinvent the wheel every time. Agencies must make non-exempt records available for inspection and copying during customary business hours for minimum thirty hours per week, excluding holidays. So basically, you know, if somebody wants to come in, this does, maybe it doesn't happen a ton, but if somebody wants to come in and just look through agency records and make copies themselves, then that's, you know, it's no skin off your nose. It's not, that's not costing much to the agency. So they're allowed to, to sort of do that during business hours. And then if, if folks want their own copies of public records, publishing a fee schedule. If, if you're charging copies, some jurisdictions decide not to. It's sort of publishing that fee schedule for getting actual copies. There's some statutory requirements around what fees can and cannot reflect, or they cannot reflect searching, reviewing, redacting records, things like that. A public record is also defined broadly, again, because the intent for this, like the OPMA is to make sure government is open and public. This was a broad definition. So it's not just, you know, it says includes any writing, but especially these days, writing can mean a lot of things. And, you know, that, that includes text messages, emails, documents. It's also, the, the scope of it is also prepared, owned, used, or retained by the agency. So it's not just a document prepared by, gosh, I keep doing that. Prepared by staff or prepared by an elected official, right? It's also, you know, any wide range of types of writings, types of, of records that could be just retained or, or owned or just used by that organization. So, yeah, it includes emails, paper files, again, websites, web content. There's a lot of case law, especially kind of earlier in the two thousands, when you could start emailing on your phone and stuff like that. Doesn't matter the device. Personal, your personal email on your, on your cell phone. If you're, it's about the substance. So if you're communicating about agency business, then you're creating a public record. Yes?
Do you think it would be a good practice for commissioners to have sponsored emails sponsored by the agency so that when there's a public records request, they can be easily searched rather than having it be on, like for us as commissioners, have it be on our private email?
Yeah, I, I think that if there's resources for that, I think that's, that's a good idea. If, I mean, if not, if, as long as sort of your, your personal emails, you know, they will eventually, you know, as you're communicating with, you know, county staff, those emails are retained in the county servers. But yes, I think generally that's a, that's a good idea to play it safe.
I was just going to comment that on the advisory committee for the Port of Olympia, we were given separate email addresses by the board.
Yeah, that's, that's smart. And it's for similar reasons why, you know, once you're an elected official, a lot of folks maintain separate social media accounts for their, you know, their city council Facebook account and then their campaign account, things like websites, same like that. The more you can put a wall up there, the, the better.
So the personal email accounts of the commissioners would not be subject to the Public Records Act, just those emails that have been collected by the planning department?
Well, yes, except to the extent you're, you're discussing public business using your personal, so if you're, if you're discussing, if you're discussing commission business to somebody else's also personal email, even though that's not touching a commissioner server, that could, that's also a public record. So you can't get around that, not saying you're trying to, but you couldn't, you couldn't avoid that by just not emailing someone's formal county email and thus of what, so it's, it's always the content of the record, but, but to your, I think to what you're getting at, just by way of being a planning commissioner and having using your, your Gmail account, you haven't suddenly opened your entire Gmail account to the Public Records Act. Only, oh yeah, only those, only those communications which are official business, those do become public records. But the, your entire personal Gmail account isn't.
Someone to get access to that information?
Frankly, discovery, if there's a lawsuit, they could ask for it that way. A lot of these types of, you know, these and, and Open Public Meeting Act lawsuits can be very difficult for plaintiffs to, because a lot of the evidence is tough to find. But also public records, and I'll get to what are, to requests in a minute. Requests will also ask for records, you know, any records by planning commissioners. And so then typically what would happen is your records officer or designee will reach out to you and say, give me all of the records that you have, you know, including personal, you know, records created on your Gmail, for example. You know, dealing with this, dealing with this issue. So it's kind of on you then to disclose it. So they would have to kind of find it that way. Oops. Sorry, sorry. Oh, requesters, any other questions about this? Yes?
Well, I'm not sure if it's about this, but this time, are you going to talk anymore about timeliness? Because?
Yes.
Oh, you are?
Yeah, yeah. Of the response? Yeah. Yes. So, yeah, so requesters, so this is more for requesters, but it's good for, for those on the receiving end to note as well. It is not required, so most, most local governments have a public records form that a requester would use and submit to the public records official. That is not statutorily required, though. So if, if an agency has, I think the statutory language right there is fair notice that someone is seeking a public record, even if it's not on a form, you still need to respond to it. So that's important to know. A lot of people think, well, if a form didn't come in, this isn't a record, I can ignore it. That's not the case. It's just, you want to encourage folks to use the form because that sort of guides their request into being something that's respondable. Request for information is not a request for records, and that's, that's important because a lot of times there is a request for information. And the distinction there is the, the agency is not required to create a record to respond to a records request. So if somebody's requesting information about how does the agency do this? And there's not a written policy or procedure. It's just, you know, maybe a more informal way of practicing, something like that is just the first example that comes to mind. That's a request for information and not for a doc, you know, not for a record. And there's no requirement for somebody to sit down and write a response to that rec, and then provide that. So if someone's requesting information and not an actual record that exists, if somebody's requesting another example would be like a, well, I don't want to go down that rabbit hole, but that's just, that's an important distinction. So if you're asked for information, that information is not reflected in an existing record. You're not required to create a record in order to respond. Now, a lot of times it's just kind of semantics and somebody clearly meant, you know, I want an information on the comprehensive plan update. Just best, best practice there is just to, that's, you clearly understand what they mean and sort of in your response, which I'll get to in a minute, you want to clarify and confirm what you mean is, I want the records associated with the, you know, public or the comprehensive plan update. But oftentimes that, you know, information a lot of times means records and requests, but that distinction is important because sometimes, sometimes it's not, and somebody's asking for information that's not reflected in a record, and that's something you don't have to respond to. And again, yeah, there's a distinction between inspection and copying. So inspection, they can come in and, and look at them if there's copies requested. You know, there's a possibility to charge fees and that sort of thing. So here's the responses. So there's a statutory requirement to respond to a public records request within five days. And that response can be a number of things. You can provide the record. If it's, if it's easy, you know, if, again, if it's a matter of somebody wants a copy of the comprehensive plan, you can send them the, the link to the website and, and you're good. Acknowledge, this is what happens often. Acknowledge the receipt of the request and provide a reasonable estimate of the time needed to respond. So that, again, just within the five days, you have to say, we've received your response, we think your response is this. Based on this understanding, we need a month to respond. If it takes a long time, sometimes it's helpful to clarify, you know, we need to go to a third party to get to let them know, there's some, some exemptions dealing with sort of private issues. There's sort of third party notice requirements in there. It's a large volume. We need to do this in installments. So it's just, you sort of respond by explaining, you know, here's what we think the timeline is. You can acknowledge the receipt, ask for clarification, and provide a reasonable estimate of time required to respond if there's not a clarification. So you could get a public records request that's clearly a request, but you don't quite understand what they're asking for and you, it's not your job to figure out what they mean. You can just ask like, please clarify, you know. And if you don't, here's how long it's going to take us to respond. And it will obviously be a long time, or you can simply deny the request. And so, you know, you've requested information, you've requested records that are protected pursuant to this exception, you know, that sort of thing. But one of those responses has to come within five days. Oh, and in seeking clarification, yeah, here's some some more nuance. If a, if a request is both clear and unclear, so if parts of the request are, are clear, so I, you know, I would like information on, or I, I would like the records associated with the most recent comprehensive plan update concerning, you know, grass areas within the jurisdiction. Obviously, you know, it's clear that they want records associated with the most recent comprehensive plan update. It is unclear what they meant by the grass areas in the jurisdiction. So you would need to sort of distinguish between those two in responding and say, you know, we understand you want information associated with the comprehensive plan update. It will take us this much time to respond to that. Please clarify what you mean by, you know, the, the grass areas. And if you don't clarify that, we don't have to take that into consideration in our response. So that's, anyway, that, that happens sometimes as planning commissioners, like this is not something you necessarily need to worry about. Just understand that sometimes there are records that are both have parts that are clear and parts that are unclear, and you have to respond to the clear parts, and you have to try to clarify the unclear parts. And if the unclear parts don't get clarified, you don't act, you don't have to respond to them. You had a question about responses to that? Sort of answered or did you, or timeliness? Yeah.
I, I have a related question, I guess, like, let's say you have somebody who's, who's got that makes a request and then wants to make another request that's not related to the first request or that's kind of something they thought of later. I know that, or it seems that a lot of jurisdictions have a policy, and I think the Port of Olympia has a policy of saying, if you have one request in, you can't, we will not respond to your next request until we fulfill first request. Is that allowed?
I don't think so. I mean, I would want to know more about that. Obviously, that's a question for legal counsel, but.
Be treated as a, as a separate request regardless of the requester, right? Like if somebody puts in a request, it should have a timely response. And then, and then whoever, I mean, there shouldn't be a name, I mean, requests shouldn't be attached to each other in that sense, right?
Yeah, if they, if they're genuinely different requests, then you would treat them differently in the same timeline. So you still have to respond within five days. You couldn't wait for the first one to resolve. But, uh, but, but that would be different from, you know, if there's a, if there's some back and forth on a, on a request and you're sort of clarifying it or changing the scope. That, that's different. But there's the请求er as a, as an individual, you can't put limits on the number of, you know, unless it's being used for, you know, abusive purposes and you're sort of named a serial requester or something. Then, uh, yeah, there's, you still have to respond with them. Now, you could say in your five day response, it's going to take us a while because of staff shortages and we're dealing with a bunch of other responses. The, the five day response is not, you have to respond within five days with the substance of their, it's just acknowledge receipt and explain how long it's going to take. So even if somebody is requesting a bunch and it's taking up a bunch of staff time, you can say within five days, it's going to take us a while. There's no time limit. I mean, you obviously don't want to do anything nefarious, but there's nothing wrong with saying this is going to take us a long time because we're short-staffed, given the volume of requests. Something like that.
Another, just to, to be sure, so if, if you are doing a response and within the five days, just to, to be sure about what that said, you have to sort of say, you have to always provide an estimate based on your best guess of what the person meant. You always are supposed to provide an estimate of how long it will take to fulfill that request.
Yeah.
You can't just say, please clarify this, and then I'll tell you what I wanted, what you wanted.
No, you have to say, and if you don't, it's going to take us this long, given the ambiguities here. And if you don't get a response to that, if it's never clarified, then you, you communicate again, we're dropping this because you haven't responded. Okay, I know I'm getting really short on time. So, yeah, okay. So searching records, this is stuff that public record staff does, I won't do that. PRA exemptions are narrowly construed, again, because there's the presumption that a, a, a record is public. What you want to do is, common practice is having what's called an exemption log. So you, there's all the records that are identified as responsive, but for which, oops, a oh gosh, what have I done? As responsive, but oh, I'm going the wrong way. Okay, you know, because I'll just, this will be the last thing I say, I guess. Records that are responsive, because I think the rest was kind of staff's level stuff anyway. Records that are responsive, but for which an exemption applies, or that they're going to be just withheld entirely or, or sort of redacted. You want to put together, it's called an exemption log, which explains specifically what is the exemption? And, and sort of a description of what is being exempted. You know, we're, we're exempting, you know, this part of an email exchange with, with county council because of attorney-client privilege under the statute, something like that. And you kind of put that together. I'll cut that short because I do want to have some more Q and A with any of us, and we've got two minutes left. So, yeah.
And I guess I'm advocating for our own county emails. If, if, sometimes between us, somebody will send us additional information, you know, page or something that they, that they want us to see. And I don't know, I, I'm guessing maybe staff keeps that, I don't know. But, you know, typically for me, I would copy it and then delete it. Is me deleting that email, does that put me in some type of violation?
Deleting it? So you would copy the email?
A hard copy, yeah.
Oh. I don't know, that's.
A lot of us just make a hard copy because we don't like to be on the computer.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, you know, I don't know. That's a good question. I mean, that's certainly, I don't know. That's a good question for, for staff who might throw that to their.
Quite frankly, if we all kept everything that the staff sent us, we would quickly fill up our inbox.
Now, I hear you. Yeah.
Yeah. So the official record is the creation of, so the email that was sent by the staff is the original record. So you can delete it.
Yeah, assuming you sort of receive it and don't, you know, you don't do, you don't respond and then just delete the whole. I don't know. Yeah, I guess you're right, because if, if it's going to the server of the county, then the record is being maintained. And, and deleting it is probably fine.
Okay. Well, thank you, Jake, for that last segment. Sure, go ahead.
So, when it comes to legislative things like the comp plan or maybe shorelines, do we as planning commissioners have any duty to disclose anything such as, you know, right, I obviously, I own property in Thurston County. At what point do I have to go down the road of saying, this is my property and I need to recuse myself from this?
Not let, not let any legislative action, you don't have to.
Does the county have any authority to require me?
To require you to disclose because of some sort of pending legislative action? I don't think so. I mean, that, I mean, the appear, the, that doctrine applies to quasi judicial proceedings involving permits and, and site-specific action, not specifically not legislative action. So I wouldn't think so, but.
There might be a requirement to, to act as a planning, to be appointed as a planning commission member. You might have to disclose what your address is or how you're associated with the jurisdiction that you're serving. That's normal.
Yeah, as part of the appointment process, that would be, yeah, but so that it would be sort of a is is part of the comprehensive plan update process, like planning commissioners, I wouldn't think would have to disclose where their property is in order to participate in providing a recommendation on comp plan amendments. Even if.
Be excluded from discussion.
Yeah.
Kind of, that's kind of the direct where I'm going, yes.
Yeah, yeah, not with respect to a legislative action. Yeah.
Um, well, we're, I think we're at time, but I wanted to allow for, especially our those of us who joined virtually, if there's other questions for any of the speakers that came tonight or anything that you still have questions about that you want to ask of us, we'll give it like a five minute extension on our time.
So we can have one online. Okay. Come up here, it's a long one. Okay.
Yep, great. So this one's on SEPA. Our county makes SEPA determinations after the issue has been reviewed by the planning commission and has been brought to a briefing by the Board of County Commissioners. That seems to me like that it is late in the process. Not, and she quotes concurrent with the general project review on end quote, as stated on slide twelve in whatever that presentation was. Is it concurrent or late?
So talking about.
So the generally the so I'm I'm guessing the this situation is a legislative, so SEPA determination after the issue has been reviewed by the planning commission. Yeah, so generally, okay, so this very generally, because I don't want to get into like fact specific issues that I'm practicing attorneys should do, but generally concurrent with kind of what that means is that when you're going through the land use application process, you are also going through the SEPA process. So example, the SEPA checklist is part of the application process that's being reviewed all at once. The, you know, the hearing, so if the planning commission is hearing the having a hearing on the on the permit application, you know, it is also having a hearing on the SEPA implications of that too. So it's sort of, it's that SEPA, because SEPA is in a separate statute and has a separate process, there was an attempt to sort of align that with the underlying project permit. And so generally speaking, they just have to be in alignment that way. And and so that's sort of the intent as far as, you know, it going to the planning commission up to the board. Whereas a different approval might be at a different stage. Again, I think that's that's probably okay. It's just that they have to be processed relatively at the same, you know, at the same time and on the same track.
A lot of the updates that jurisdiction is doing for their comprehensive plan, they will pair it with the SEPA process and just any comment that someone makes about a comprehensive plan is also a comment that's going to be reported in the SEPA. And so that way they're not trying to, like, the staff isn't the one trying to decide, well, was this supposed to be a comment about SEPA or was this supposed to be a comment about the comp plan? So they can combine that process for ease of receiving information.
Any other questions online?
No, no other questions online.
I appreciate everyone's time tonight. Thank you so much for sticking with us and thank you on the virtual world for putting up with the technical difficulties. We appreciate you as well.
Thank you to Valerie, Jason, Dan. Appreciate it.
Both of you online, we will email this certificate that I'm going to hand out to everybody here for the Open Public News Training.